Can you go on to?
No, I had Michelle run it for me. The planning and zoning meeting for May 8, 2019 will now come to order. Please stand with us for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have roll call, please?
Chairman Williams.
Here.
Vice Chairman Shaver. Secretary Chambers.
Here.
Member Hare.
Here.
Member Baker. Member Richardson.
Here.
Member Severs.
Here.
Member Noel Copeland.
Here.
And who are quorum? Next is approval of minutes for April 3, 2019. Is there a motion to approve or any corrections?
Move for approval.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Am I losing my place? Okay. All person to anticipate speaking on any public hearing item must first of all the oath card be heard on that agenda item and sign the oath card contained thereon. These cards are located on the table near the entrance to council chambers or may be obtained from the recording secretary. This meeting will be conducted in accordance to procedures adopted in resolution 24-1997. Those speaking in favor of a request will be heard first, those opposed will be heard second, and those who wish to make a public comment on item will speak third. The applicant may make a brief rebuttal if necessary. A representative from either side or against may cross-examine a witness. Anyone who speaks is considered a witness. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents you desire the commission to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the recording secretary. Staff, well, I would just say it's all items have been properly advertised.
Yes.
And has anybody here had the opportunity to speak to anybody in the public about the items coming before us?
Nope.
Okay. So with that, my understanding is, I know that this could potentially be a very long meeting, and I know that A... was it? Did we have anybody in the audience here for A? Anybody here for A? Anybody for C? Okay. So we have audience members who are here for item C. I know item B could potentially be a long one, so I'd like to see if the commission would like to move item C up first, and then we'll go back to the original order of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All opposed? Okay. So with that, if you would, if we could go to item C first to accommodate those who came in the audience?
Item C starts on page 153 of your packet. So item C is a subdivision processes in the area of critical concern. This was a request at the last P&amp;Z meeting by Commission receivers to give a presentation on the city's subdivision process and area of critical concern. So he's provided to us some research and some comments he would like to present to you, starting on page 154 of your packet. And with that, I'll turn it over to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, do you object if I step down there since I would be talking to you?
It would probably be better.
I thought it would probably be better. I don't, whether you want to hear the input from the public first or not?
I think it'd be better to hear afterwards.
Okay. Doesn't matter to me. If you could just give me a moment to get my stuff down there? I didn't know we were moving it up. Excuse me.
It was brought to my attention that we had people in the audience for this, and I know that the other items are going to be...
Certainly.
So those members of the audience, if you'd like to speak on this, if you could still fill out an oath card to be sure that we capture your names.
to address you.
My first and primary concern is the subdivision sketch plat process, and that's what I would like to address first. It's illustrated in part by the Brookshire subdivision process. I was not on the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 3, 2018, when that item was considered. And the city council approved it, as I recall, approximately January 9, as such. With regard to the sketch plan process, the city attorney, Mr. Broome, advised that that process was changed back in 2006, which is much unlike what other cities in Bouverne County handle plat, plats as such. Apparently, I don't, I guess that there must have been, not been much of an issue or controversy concerning it, but as you can see, the report that you received, and I had included in the agenda item on page 157, it shows a one-page report to you, which really is a report to the city council. The same report was provided to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It basically was a very one-page report as such, did not go over any of the comprehensive plan criteria, did not go over any criteria dealing with the land development regulations as such. In reviewing other jurisdictions requirements, for example, the city of Cocoa, the city of Rockleigh, the city of Melbourne, the city of West Melbourne, and Palm Bay, et cetera, it provides really input for the subdivision process at the preliminary plat stage, which involves a lot more information is provided at that, at that time, as such. And for example, the city of Melbourne says the reports and comments shall bear upon the public interest consistently of the plat with the comprehensive plan and the relationship to plat to the city land development regulations as such. Certainly, your current city staff was not involved in preparing the change in the code back then. I think Mr. Rice was the city engineer who was primarily one of the ones that wanted to change, as well as Courtney Barker, the previous planner, as such. And then, for example, Melbourne and others are consistent with this. The planning board shall review the preliminary plat and required exhibits to determine conformity with the comprehensive plan and these regulations. Also, all of them expressly provide for a public hearing process. I've just pointed out to you that there's no provision whatsoever in the, in the sketch plan process for a public hearing. There's no advertising of public hearing, and many of these say there has to be due public notice, which means an advertised public hearing. There's no provision in the process currently, the sketch plant process, and as I remind, neither the city council or the Planning and Zoning Commission provide any input or even see the preliminary plat, which is obviously the most important documents, because based upon the approval of those documents by the administrator, one can proceed with construction of it, of, and then it comes back to the planning, excuse me, it comes back to the council for final plat approval, and generally after the improvements have already been built. The only sketch plat process I have been involved in was the Antigua Bay Phase 1 sketch plat, and I attached that to your agenda 158, which likewise again shows a one-page summary. As you may recall, I was on the commission at that time, made a motion to approve that, but I did attach some nine different conditions because there's lots of things I thought were omitted or should be included, such as, for example, a preservation easement along the shoreline of 20 feet, which the developer was happy to agree with. That wasn't even a part of any recommendation as such. In addition, I pointed out, the preliminary, excuse me, the sketch plat didn't show where the, the outfall was, and that's a clear condition. So I admit, right or wrong, and someone may disagree with me, I have an advantage in that I've looked at the codes and I've looked at plans on many occasions, so I can see and spot some of those things. And unless they pointed out to the average council member or the commissioner, you wouldn't ordinarily realize what they are displaying or showing. And that's the reason why I believe it's important to have a process and procedure whereby enough information is provided that you know one way or the other, that there is compliance with comprehensive plan or is compliance with the land development regulations. With regard to Brookshire, and certainly my comments are my opinions, ultimately staff rules on this, and they have already ruled in lots of ways, and certainly that's their prerogative. But in, since I was involved in drafting the Oxford Protection Ordinance, I was involved in the freshwater management study that was presented to the council in 1985, that served the basis of the 1986 ordinance, and I have heard numerous hydrologists testify and give presentations to city council. I'm aware of the intent and purpose of the Oxford Protection and the area of critical concern, and they call it an area of critical concern for a reason. It's important for our continuing water supply, as reflected in the 24 comprehensive plan. In 20 years, there's a possibility we may be running short on water, and maybe additional wells have to be drilled. So that's all the more reason why we need to ensure, from the public interest and the citizen's standpoint, that the codes and ordinances of the city are followed. And again, other people will make that ultimate decision, and I can provide my opinion or thought, which I have done. With regard to that particular project, I attached many exhibits. I obtained all my information from the city and the review comments, as well as plans as such that have been provided to me. If I'm missing something, it's just because I didn't receive it, or maybe I did not ask the right question so as to elicit that information, but I relied upon the documents that I received. One of the things I would like to provide to you, which was a document that was provided to, in anticipation of a variance request, which was subsequently withdrawn, and that issue was brought up here, and this is a document that is a public record that was This document was, again, in the city's file in anticipation of a variance request, which was subsequently withdrawn. It provides a little more detail as far as topography than other maps that I had seen. And the reason why I'm providing that to you is the language of the ordinance that's prepared, contemplates on its face on page four. For development sites having elevations both above and below 25 feet mean sea level, those portions of the site, those portions of the site which are above 25 feet shall conform to the performance in paragraph A1 above, and all required retention ponds and improvements shall be located in the areas above 25 feet. I don't think there's much mystery interpretation necessary as to what is contemplated there, what the original intent of the drafters and the study showed. We need to retain that water as high on the hill because the water table does tend to follow, not exactly, the lay of the land, that is, the hill, and there are lenses or bubbles as such with regard to water. As you will see from the drawing I just handed to you, it shows approximately the 25-foot line where the topo is. Interesting enough, the original sketch plat that many of you on the commission saw did not locate the one retention pond in this southeast corner. Matter of fact, it located it more in the center, center of the property, and you will see that in the exhibits I have given to you. That's exhibit one, I believe, attached, and I can reference the exact page number if you'd like. It primarily was in the area above 25 feet. Somehow, after council approved the sketch plant, to got over to the preliminary plat stage, the retention pond was shifted over to this corner. That issue did not come back to the city council. It did not come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for advice or recommendation. It was shifted primarily outside of, above 25 feet. And you will see in one of the exhibits there, I think it's exhibit number two, there's a small area highlighted that's above 25 feet. It's exhibit two, where the retention ponds end up, only that small yellow area is above 25 feet. And as a matter of fact, that area shows as low as 18.8 feet from what I can read using magnifying glass trying to look at the drawings. It's primarily around 20 feet or below, and appears from the drawings, they're raising it to an elevation of 23.7, I believe is the number, what the drawings speak for themselves. I only point that out because there needs to be a process in this procedure in the subdivision process. If you're going to make a change from the sketch plat and on the preliminary plat, that's different, and I would argue that's a significant difference because it directly relates to the language of the ordinance as to where retention is supposed to occur, it, there should be indication of language where it should come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and if, at a minimum, come back to the city council for their review and consideration. Again, my comments are mainly designed or intended to improve the process, so that's why I'm stating that. As far as other provisions in my letter to you, I think it's important to stress and everyone, I would hope that staff, the appropriate staff, looks at the freshwater study of 1985. If they're being, applying and interpreting the ordinance, it's a good idea they have that background information so that they can see what the intention really is, the purpose of that. One of the intentions expressed by the city council in 2005, since many applicants had said, "Well, your code allows me to cut to eight feet, so I'm cutting to eight feet." There was a committee formed by then-Ranetta Curry Grant, Mr. Barnes, I hydrologist, and one or two local engineers. I'm not absolutely certain of the name, but I'm fairly certain I know who was on there. And one of the recommendations from that committee was to insert language, which is on page five. "The limitations on the extent above the cut of the natural topography shall not be construed as an automatic authorization to alter the natural topography." It says what it says, and it was put in there respectfully, I believe, for a reason. Again, the purpose is try to maintain the hills and to retain water as high on hills, particularly as evidenced by, one of the documents shows the proximity of this land to wells of the city. Those circles are around it. So that's reflected in the documents attached. With regard to some of my other comments, I think there needs to be a clarification in the process with regard to, our comprehensive plan addresses the issue of wetlands and requires a functional value determination as to whether they should be preserved or not. I'm not, I don't know whether that has been done. I'm aware of a December 2016, a study by a wetlands expert, and I do not see that study as using the criteria of our ordinance. Person may or may not have been asked that question to base it upon, but I'm not sure there was ever a report or study that shows, yes, two of the wetlands here, up towards the front, closer to Garden Street, can be filled, and they have very little functional value. I know there's a tendency to rely upon St. John's, and I understand that, but we still have our codes, we still have our comprehensive plan, and right or wrong, we're supposed to follow it, I believe, is what it says. And so I don't see whether any recommendation was made by staff or anyone to the city council, Planning and Zoning Commission, or anyone attaching this study showing there's no functional value to these wetlands, therefore it's appropriate to fill them by 10 feet to fill, and some of them have as much as 10 feet of fill put in them, based upon what I read from the engineering drawings. And as you can see, see from that map I gave to you, before that change, a lot of the retention or drainage went into those low areas, below 25 feet, historically, and now a lot of that drainage is not going to go there. It's going to go to the southeast corner of the property, near Garden Street and I-95. It's my understanding, and I've been told that it complies with the 100-year storm, and the retention should hold the 100-year storm. And I was told that that's one of the benefits of this project. Frankly, I'm not sure where they would go with the water if they couldn't retain it on site because there's no easy outfall going anywhere on this particular site. That's just a practical fact of matter as such. So I think that type of thing should be addressed. Is that addressed by Planning and Zoning Commission, or is that decision solely made by the administrator as such? Another provision in our code deals with having an upland buffer. And who makes that decision? Does the administrator make that decision? Does St. John's make that decision? If we have it in our code, there's supposed to be an upland buffer, then someone has to make a decision. Is that the administrator? Is that the city council? Who is it that makes that decision as such? It should be addressed. I bring that up partly because, and some of you may be aware, historically, lots of projects stress. Look at all this 50-foot wide upland buffer we're preserving for the benefit of the wetlands. In this instance, certainly some of these wetlands had a moderate to high quality to them. That's what I read in the report I saw. And, but who makes that decision? I remember council meetings in which there's a lot of discussions about upland buffers. As, as I read from the St. John's permit, there are some secondary, there are some impacts and some mitigation, so money will be paid to buy some credits in Volusia County. I recall the discussion here of council years past. Why are we, why don't, why aren't we protecting our own wetlands rather than having someone send money to Volusia County? Why are we doing that? So I simply raised that question. These issues should be addressed. I don't think they solely should be left to administrator to decide. Under, apparently, the current process and procedure, they ought to be a recommendation, and perhaps the city council should make those kinds of decisions. I could touch upon other issues, but those are the primary issues. And points I would like to respectfully suggest, the city, the city council and staff needs to look at its code and the processing of, of the, of these applications to make sure the commission, the council has the appropriate information. I'm not at all saying that the I'm not at all saying that the applicant didn't submit the information. I'm not saying they didn't submit the required information. Obviously, staff felt as though they submitted the required information for the sketch plan process. I know the sketch plan process says you're supposed to show major trees. I ask, well, is there a tree survey? And I was told none is required at this stage. It's required at the preliminary plat stage. So it's a little difficult as a member sitting on this commission to evaluate an application and whether there should be adjustments or should not be adjustments. As you may recall, it's previously brought up before this commission, not by me, but by someone else, that there was an oak tree on this site that it took three people interlocking their hands to get completely around. I see, the largest oak tree I see on this site is forty-five or forty-six inches. I've seen it two different places on the plan, one forty-six, one forty-five, but it will not survive. I do see where an eery tree is going to survive. I think that's unfortunate. I know there's going to be mitigation and they're going to plant a lot of trees, but a three or four or five or six-inch diameter tree growing at what rate is going to be ultimately a forty-five-inch large oak tree. These things are important, I believe, to the citizens of Titusville. I notice we have a court reporter here taking down what I say. Maybe somebody is thinking about suing me for expressing my opinion about things in public records, public ordinances, the comprehensive plan, et cetera. I don't know any other motive than that. But in any event, since I lived across the street from this land and watched it for countless years, years. The Bovard Community College Foundation once upon a time owned this property. Unfortunately, as city attorney in the past, I had to stop the mining of soil off the property, which is on the northwestern corner of the property because they were hauling it away. And certainly I'm in favor of development, but likewise, I'm in favor of looking at the codes, applying the codes appropriately and we having appropriate development for the benefit of everyone. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any. With regard to my suggestions based upon what I observed, with regard to addition or corrections, supplements to the comprehensive plan, I'll bring those up when we talk about the comprehensive plan.
Member Noel Cookman?
So I want to go back to one of your first points about we, something was approved and then the retention pond moved.
Yes.
So I guess my question's for staff. If we approve something and then it changes, why doesn't it come back? I mean, otherwise, what are, what are we approving if someone can get approval on whatever and then make a change and not have to come back? I don't understand. That appears like a broken process, so I just don't underst, I'm surprised that someone has the ability to change the plan after it's been approved by both us and it sounds like and city council, right? Member Severs was approved by us and city council and then changed after that. So how does that work?
If you give me a moment, I'll see if I can bring up the section of the code that talks about sketch plat. My assumption, my understanding so far is that there is some room for determination by the administrator of the code. So if it is a minor change to a sketch plat that was provided and approved by the, recommended by commission and then ultimately approved by city council, if there's a change like maybe one lot being moved or wetland, I'm sorry, stormwater areas probably being reconfigured in some way, those are kind of just design issues that are being changed based on the fact that now they're going through preliminary stage, plat stage, which is an engineer review stage and really determining exactly how everything's supposed to look.
And so then after it goes through that phase, it would come back here?
If it's insignificant according to the administrator, it would not. So that's, I was just throwing out a couple of examples where that would probably be considered as insignificant, but I have to look at how this is treated at that time. A really significant change I can just throw out is a brand-new intersection, a brand-new driveway going into the subdivision, maybe an extra fifty lots, you know, that kind of thing definitely would need to come back to you. That's a big change. So I'd have to look and see what the code says specifically how that's determined by, it really comes down to the administrator.
Is that it?
Well, I have one other question because I think the other, the other point that was brought up was things that are coming to planning and zoning that don't meet code. Is that, was that what you were saying, was something comes to us that doesn't meet the code? Like it doesn't have the buffer it's supposed to have or it doesn't have?
Well, maybe that's my opinion, but other people may disagree with me. One of my comments on this plan was there's no dry lines a part of the plant for reclaimed water. There's two provisions of the comprehensive plan that require that.
So?
An administrator, board adjustment appeals, as I understand the law, cannot vary that.
So should that have been, should that have been part of the staff report that we got to review this plan is that that did or did not exist or did or did not meet code?
Like I say, the staff report, a couple of examples that Mr. Severs submitted here was based on an original staff report that the city has always generated since the sketch plat process was devised since back in two thousand and six, based on our research. There's always room for improvement. We can certainly provide a much more detailed analysis as part of a staff report that will include those kind of questions. As far as the dry lines, I can't answer that. That's something I'll have to get, go back at the next, your next meeting and provide that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
I can perhaps partially address that. I had a meeting with some members of staff Monday and obviously the person involved was reliant on the city code and making interpretation of the city code. The city code may say one thing if the comprehensive plan says something different, thou shall do something. You have to do it until it's, until the comprehensive plan is changed. I mean, in the area of critical concern, dry line, either you have to, you have to, I mean, I have the, in my materials I've given you, I quote the language. It says what it says. This is not an opinion on my part or interpretation. It is whatever it is. And let me just say this. I tried to timely make comments whenever I finally became aware that the drawings had been approved. In six days, I furnished my letter. I'm not trying to hold up any process whatsoever. I realize the administrator can ignore everything I say, which is fine, but I was trying to provide input during the process and I was not aware. Once the variance was withdrawn, I thought perhaps the project was on hold. But once I was aware, I timely, very timely, within six days, provided some comments.
Well, ahead, Mrs. Harris.
I'm sorry. Unless I'm mistaken, I believe the commission, and I was not a voting member at that time, I was the school board liaison, but I think the commission turned this down because of the wetlands and because of the need for the aquifer to be protected.
The recommendation from P and Z was five to one in favor. Member Baker voted against it.
Okay. Yeah, I remember her.
That's pretty clear.
I remember her concern for the tree.
Right.
Am I mistaken?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly, she was concerned with that and definitely. Is that it? Good.
Okay. Mr. Severs?
I got questions after this too, so.
Okay.
No problem.
If there is a conflict between the city code and the comprehensive plan, which one takes precedent?
Let's have the attorney answer the question.
It's a difficult situation. I believe that the code must be followed and adhered to at all times.
Code?
Well, the comprehensive plan is the guidance that the code should be modeled after. And if the code is inconsistent, then probably it needs to be changed, but the city council is obligated to follow and the commission are guided by the comprehensive plan. That is the guidebook. Comprehensive plan.
Yeah, let me just, and according to state statutes, the comprehensive plan is, you can't create an ordinance or do anything inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. So if there is an apparent conflict, that's where the comp plan would take precedent in that case. So as far as the conflict, interpretation of that, that's something I can't answer tonight. I have to be able to bring that back to you.
Okay, then who corrects the comprehensive plan to have it match the city code? Who does that?
The, the purpose of the comprehensive plan is to provide a growth management framework for the city. And so the LDRs is just one of those tools to help implement that plan.
So it comes back to you guys then?
So if they're, if they're in conflict, then the code should be rewritten to match the comprehensive plan. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. Yeah, so you create new policies as part of the comprehensive plan. You're directing staff or you're directing the city to develop new programs to implement it, including updating the LDRs and the AB.
But in the timeframe between when changes to the comprehensive plan are approved and the code actually gets changed, you're saying that then the, whatever the current approved comprehensive plan is, trumps the code? Because the intent is to eventually update the code to match the comprehensive plan?
Yeah, that's, that's always the intent. So I would say though, in this particular situation, what Commissioner Severs has brought up is the apparent conflict. That's not something we can help you with tonight. That's something, that's not something I can give you an interpretation on and an explanation on. So I think honestly, the staff is going to have to look at this and provide to you some more information.
Okay.
Is that it?
Okay.
Okay. So I wanted to give a little background and discuss some of the points. I'll tell you that the, years ago, say back in two thousand and six, this was changed primarily because we as a city wanted to, it was over and over, I mean, you were the city attorney. The discussion was, was that Titusville didn't want growth, didn't want development and we had to open up our doors for business and that our sketch plat process was too expensive, too long. Do you recall?
Yes, sir.
And so we changed. And that was to open up the doors, to try to get rid of the stigma, which we didn't, but I know that we have continued to, we've, I feel like we've really opened up and made things a lot easier, made things a lot cheaper than previously. I mean, I can't say that about other cities, but I, from previous, we have. But when we changed some of this, we knew that we were losing information. The information that we got before this is night and day and even with some of the, some of the, well, anyway, it's a lot different. And it is hard, and we've said over and over again, it's very difficult to make decisions on generalizations. I think ever since we've made this change, this board, or I've heard, well, I know I have and I know I've heard other board members say that it is difficult and that has not changed from this board. But one of the things that did come up over and over again was that when the codes were changed, the intents were not supposed to change. When we, and that's what I've heard over and over again from city staff. If, if something was inadvertently deleted, it was unintentional and would be put back in, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe, I mean, and you can, if this is the same thing you've heard as well, this is what I believe I've heard from city staff, is that two things, if items were inadvertently deleted, they would be re-added and the intent was never to change. And if it was to change, we would know. But it appears to me that the, I, the area of critical concern was one that when it first came about, when it really hit home for us, it was protect these areas at all costs. And, and it seems like we have strayed away from that purpose. I do recall, well, I appreciate the map that was provided with, about the area of critical concern. To me, it was always kind of vague. I was given verbals, it goes from this street to this street and I never really ever saw a map. And this is the first time that I kind of recall really seeing it on paper. So it made it really easy to say, this time around, these are our areas in this packet that we got. But, it was, I had a couple of things. So what you're saying tonight is that you believe that we should, well, first off, I want to go back. The first thing that I noticed was that this was a letter from Peggy Pisaka and are you presenting for the city? I know that you're presenting for yourself, but the way that this presentation?
I'm here, I was, I'm a commissioner and I heard, heard some of these things going on. I looked at it and I have a history of background information with regard to this property and I felt as though I was concerned about the process.
Right. I'm just saying that, that the presentation, because it says, generally I would see something like an item that said, you know, you would want to give a presentation, but the, the report is like from Peggy and then you're reporting and that confused me.
That's standard formatting. Yeah, that's, that's just a standard structure, so.
So I'm, I'm in all agreement with what you're saying. I am from my personal standpoint because I, I don't want to lose intent that we previously had. I know that from my position, yes, there are things that I will not, well, what he said, I will miss because I'm not, I'm not an expert at this like you are. I don't do this for my living. I do this as a part-time volunteer service to the city. I've been on there, I've been here the longest of anybody and even I will say that of all the changes, I would have never, ever caught the items that he's bringing before us because it was, when this was approved, my belief was when it come to the I ninety-five, my understanding was, was part of this area was FDOT got some area and had a pond or did a stormwater in that area and then all, what they were going to do was they were going to expand that. That was what I was hearing at the meeting, I thought. Am I wrong on this?
I don't recall that.
So.
I wasn't at the January meeting. I wasn't on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I can give you some background information. Unfortunately, the city was sued for eminent domain for that pond.
Yes.
Fortunately or unfortunately, however you want to look at it, the general counsel, George Lovett for the Department of Transportation, I have known for forty years. Clearly, they didn't have to follow our rules and regulations as far as size and depth, you name it. I called him up and said, look, try to comply with our area of critical concern. So what they did, they greatly expanded that DOT pond, acquiring greater land so they didn't dig nearly as deep. And.
That was at a lower elevation though, correct?
No, it varies a lot.
Okay.
It varies a lot. So, I mean, that's some of the background that probably nobody knows because it was a personal thing I did, calling him to try and to help the city in the area of critical concern.
So. So, um, going back to the higher elevation in the code, although it seems like it's very clear what the code says. You know, but from the layman's standpoint, I would have thought, you know, how do you get water to go to higher ground? I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to get the understanding of, you, you have your retention at, at higher levels. So, I mean-
It's no different than the new, um-
Are you just saying it's, it's sectioned off, different?
You, you can have different levels of retention that drop along the way. Just like they just completed on Dairy Road. Coming from Old Dixie, it goes downhill to US 1. They build, partway down the ditch, they build a berm. So it builds up to a certain height, and then it goes over that to another one. That can be done. It's not that complicated engineering, but I've seen it done. And you retain water higher up on the hill.
And that's the intent.
Which, which is the whole function and purpose of the area of critical concern and the Oxford Protection Ordinance is not to knock it down. You want to retain the water as high on the hill as possible.
No, and I got that from reading that. I, it was just, for me, it was, I was trying to, on a property like this, if you had to section it off, and, I mean, you made it clear. I mean, made it more understanding of that. And then, um, on the upland buffers, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought they determined it to be an average rather than a direct, I thought when it was changed, it was to be an average of, what, 20 feet? Rather than a, um, 10, you know, 20 feet all the way around, the delineation.
You're, and I'm simply quoting language from the developers, environmentalists, his language that he gave to the property owner, which was quoting language of St. John's Water Management District requirements.
So-
That's what that is.
But with that-
And I have a copy of that here.
Is, does the stricter language apply when it comes to, before, I thought that, maybe I'm wrong, and I could be, I could be applying this completely wrong. But I thought whether it be St. John's or Titusville, the stricter code applies. If we were the stricter code, then is it, am I way off base?
What I have been told is we generally defer to St. John's. That's what I've been told.
Okay, so that was all I had. That was all my questions. I do appreciate you doing this. I know it's a lot of work. I agree with a lot that you're saying. And I think that we should work with staff, or you should work with staff, on the changes that you, you know, outline it, bullet out, and turn it over to go to council. I think that it's always been unclear, I thought it was clear, that the intents and the language were not to be changed or deleted. But we've had many, many code changes and modifications since 2006.
Again, my purpose simply is, I think the code needs to be addressed, and some changes need to be made. And I, I'm just raising the question, who makes the decision that you're going to fill wetlands? Is that the administrator's decision? Is that the city council's decision?
I mean-
I, 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 I don't know.
I've always-
And if there, if the comprehensive plan says there's supposed to be a functional value report and study, is there one here? I, I don't know.
I would say that, that, in my opinion, that was something that's always been subjective that I've not quite understood, because it's always been said that if there was minor alterations, minor changes, then it would never need to come back before the boards.
Is minor defined anywhere?
Well, how do we ever think about it? I don't believe it is defined. I, I think it's still subjective, but, um, you know, even so, I mean, it's, we trust, we're, it's, it's based on trust, I guess. And that's, sometimes, you know, it's, it is a difference of opinion. Mr. Richardson?
Dwight, in this north area of critical concern, do you know how far the well field, the closest well field is?
The wells basically start at Garden Street and run north a long distance, almost to 46. A lot of them paralleling I-95.
So there might be some on this map?
Pardon?
There might be some wells on this map?
No, not on the map, but if you could exhibit number, exhibit number seven, which is in your packet. Shows, shows where they are. And it really illustrates, in relationship to this property, how important this property is with regard to the wells. Most of the time in the area of critical concern, there's no wells within this radius at all. In this particular instance, there are.
Maybe we need to have a workshop with the council. Discuss this whole situation. Not this one particularly, Brookshire, but the codes versus the comprehensive plan. Maybe we need to have a workshop with them.
My done?
Is that it? Okay, yes, that is it. So I know that this is just a presentation, but I'd still like to open it up to the public. Are there anybody in, is there anybody in the public that would like to come up and comment on this, or? I have no cards, but we just want to make sure. All right. Thank you, Mr. Seavers.
Yes, sir.
All right, so if we go to 9A.
9A starts on page nine of your packet. And this is the ordinance for setbacks in the PID, the Planned Industrial District. On November 27th, I should say 2018, actually. Council authorized staff to review the setback requirements in the industrial area, Space Coast Industrial Park, which is zoned Planned Industrial Park, I'm sorry, Planned Industrial District, PID. Planned Industrial Park is the actual land use. After review of other city industrial zoning districts and zoning districts within other municipalities, the staff has recommended, had recommended that setbacks within, within the PID district be reduced. A matrix with current proposed setbacks in industrial zoning districts is attached, and that is on page, excuse me. You'll see that on page 15 of your packet. In addition, the footnotes restricting parking and required landscape buffers are recommended as being duplicative to Section 30-37A, which states, "No active recreation area, storage, materials, parking or structures, except for necessary utility boxes and equipment, shall be located within the landscape buffer yard." Staff had recommended that the language where a PID district butts properties zoned residential, greater setbacks may be imposed by city council. If the property is currently zoned PID, there is no mechanism to impose additional setbacks. Status proposed language expanded the required 100-foot setback to properties both zoned as residential and utilized for residential. So this was brought before you, once before, you provided a recommendation to city council. They took your recommendation and asked for it to be sent back to you to reconsider. That's all the direction we received. So the ordinance starts on page 11 of your packet. It's the same thing you saw before. You'll see and strike through underlined these sections, the setbacks that are actually being suggested to be amended in this PID zoning district. So essentially, the 50-foot and 35-foot setbacks you see there on that table will be reduced a little bit. And my understanding is that they are being reduced down to what they, this property or these properties in this area were originally zoned prior to 1993. This all came about as a result of a request for a variance about a year ago for a property who wanted to get an accessory structure on their property. And so that property owner is now on the city council and requests for this ordinance. And so I think that history was actually already given to you before. You'll see on page 13 of your packet, the changes to some of the footnotes I just mentioned, including, right now, the, there is a 100-foot setback, perimeter setback of the entire district, not per property, it's the entire district. And so that is being changed to say 100 feet to adjacent, to any adjacent residentially or utilized residentially zoned property. Does it provide some more flexibility? There was, I believe, a couple of years ago, a variance request for another property in the PID zoning district that had wanted to expand or add in a building addition that encroached into this original 100-foot setback. So they received a variance of that. So this is partly to address that as well. So at the request of the city council, we drafted this ordinance, brought it to you. You made your recommendation, went to council, they sent it back to you. So they are scheduled to hear it again on May 14th. I'll try and answer any questions here.
Member Noel Kuplan?
So as it is provided here, is this the same version and language that we previously approved? Or has it been changed?
I, I do not believe anything has changed.
So this is exactly as we saw it the last time, where we suggested, we denied it? We denied it, city council said, look at it again.
Correct.
And you said that someone else, well, you said this came before us before. This is a property specifically that is owned by now, member?
And this is not particular to a particular property, I'm sorry.
But, but-
Yeah, this is-
I'm sorry, I thought you said that there was a variance that was requested by someone that is impacted by this.
The city council requested us to draft this ordinance. It was first brought up by one of the council members, who, prior to being on the council, had to get, obtain a variance for his property.
And he got the variance?
He did get his variance, yes.
And was there someone else that also asked for a variance?
There was another variance, as I said, for-
And that person was also given the variance?
That, yeah, that, I think, I believe that property did receive their variance for that as well. And it was a different request, it was a different, it was a request to a different portion of the code, the 100-foot perimeter setback for the whole district.
So was that 100-foot change and the language change on page 13, was that here the last time we saw it, or just the numbers were here the last time we saw it?
Yeah, nothing's changed.
So two people have asked for variances, they both got them. And the purpose of this is so we stop giving people variances, we just change the rules? Since we're giving variances anyway? Is that the purpose?
Right.
The only additional information that I know was provided at the meeting of the city council where they deliberated over this ordinance is that the, I believe there were members of the public who spoke to council, and the planning director, Peggy Bisaka, chimed in that, it may, I believe it was the economic development director for the city, who expressed that because so many people come to the city and find out what the restrictions are, no variances requested, and that the next step is that they move on to the next jurisdiction to find out where zoning requirements are suitable for the applicant's desire to build. And so that, I believe, was part of the conversation the council had. And they did not give clear direction what they're asking of the commission to discuss, but they tabled the item.
So we think that by reducing the setbacks by 15 feet, people will develop here rather than moving to the next city?
Those statements were made at the council meeting.
Okay.
Is that it?
For now.
Okay, so I, I watched that portion of the meeting. And, um, well, first off, I want to say it's very odd. If we voted on something and we've taken an action, how does it just automatically come back to us? I mean, is it just like, the rules don't apply? I mean, I thought that once you vote on something, that's it, it's passed off, and it can't come back to us. But it did.
The council had, you know, had specifically requested, so they had that ability to do it.
No, I know, I mean-
But you're saying you would have expected the council to either agree with us or go against us and pass it anyway?
Yeah, that is the normal-
Because they have the authority to do that, and by sending it back to us with no direction.
I agree that, I'm appreciative that they sent it back for more consideration. I'm just saying, but, I'm just saying from a, an order, from a procedural, it doesn't seem possible to me. To me, it doesn't seem like this, it seems that you would have said, staff would have said, we would have to come from this board to bring it back on the table. But if, if you say that it's perfectly acceptable-
The motion made by the council member was directly to send it to this commission for additional consideration.
Okay, so do we take a vote on approval again, or do we, how did, or do we just make, I don't understand?
Since it's before you, yes, I would recommend that you make a motion on this item.
But from a procedural standpoint, what would you say?
Unless there's a reason to vote differently, I would expect that your motion would be similar or the same as the last one.
I guess what I'm trying to say is if, and I've seen this happen, this is the second time in the recent years, couple of years, that I've thought that we handled things procedurally, and we couldn't do things because of procedures, but now we're, it's, it's just like, it doesn't matter. But either way, this is what I wanted to bring up. I just, I have, first off, I have an issue with it procedurally, that we shouldn't even be hearing it. It should be moving forward unless somebody from this board that voted to put it back on.
Or unless there's a change.
Yes, unless there's a change.
But if it's exactly as it was the last time we saw it, that's the question.
So I understand from the, um, the councilmen's that recommended this to come up before, I understand it was a burden on them, but that was one item. I guess I must have missed the economic developer getting up and saying that, or the econ, who was it that? I must have missed that part. Maybe I scrolled over a bit too far, because I did it on YouTube, but. So how is it that they are saying, I'm, I'm just trying to ascertain this too, that they believe, I mean, where's, is that just a, I believe that people are not coming in because of our setbacks? Or are people verbally saying that? Is businesses verbally saying, I mean, I didn't hear that, so I must have missed it, but.
I can get that information from Edie McCullar, Economic Development Director, and provide it to you.
Because if it's on a, a comment saying, well, I think we would do better, I think we, I mean, that'd be like saying, I think we'll do better if we reduce our tax dollars. I think we would do better if we, I mean, there's, I could come up with a million reasons that would get people in here. And lighting, let's put it this way. So we just discussed about reducing codes and procedures to make it cheaper for development. But, and by no means am I trying to get up here and do the scolding or anything like that. But I'm just simply saying that we have changed our processes, reduced our fees, reduced to the point that we've been open arms for development to come in. And yet, um, since the fall of 2007, the, the property, whatever you want to call it, I haven't seen significant growth on that level since. And, and we are more accommodating, I feel, than ever before, before then. But at the same time, yes, I, I see what they're saying, and I, I can agree with some of it. On the other hand, I've been to plenty of planned industrial parks. And if you go, and I always use this as an example, up north, and you go to the districts like this, what you see is green space, and the idea is to- On the other hand, I've been to plenty of planned industrial parks, and if you go, and I always use this as an example, up north, and you go to the districts like this, what you see is green space, and the idea is to make it harmonious, make it inviting, and that is created through setbacks. I understand industrial parks is in name an industrial park, but on the, on the other hand, the intent was to create a more open space, trees and vegetation, and to make it more inviting. The more upscale it is, the better you're gonna attract, you know, if you build it, they will come, if you build it right, they will come. You build it wrong, you know, you pretty much doomed the area. Reducing this, in my opinion, can potentially do that. So, that was all I wanted to add. Mr. Severs.
First, as a clarification, on March the twelfth, I did inquire from, I did receive a response from Peggy Bisaka. I inquired, "Over the last ten years or other appropriate time period, please advise the number of variances requested for setbacks in the PID district and results of the variance." The response I received was, "A search of variance applications since two thousand found one variance application and planned development information regarding this application is attached." And of course, that was, as, as Mr. Parrish indicated, was the one dealing with the accessory structure. What was the issue with the accessory structure? Is the accessory setback the problem? Should we be looking at the accessory setbacks since that, at least what I was told in writing here, in nineteen years, it was solely a accessory structure setback?
The, what I recall, the variance, it was, the PID doesn't make a distinction between two types of setbacks for accessory or principal, it just, everything has to meet that same setback. And so, that was the issue. In that particular variance, they asked for a garage to be located on the property, and it would have had to been, it would have been maybe five or six feet away from the actual property line, something like that, it was very close. So, he actually, he owned both pieces of, the adjacent piece of property, and actually had to deed a portion of the property from one lot to his in order to create a bigger setback, even, and still had to get, in order to meet just the twenty-five feet or whatever it was that the BAA would accept for the variance. So, they, he was put through some conditions by the word of adjustment in order to do that.
I mean, I've attempted to review this again, and normally, I look at, if it's such a problem, there'll be quite a number of variances. Previously, obviously, we've received some more information than we had at the last meeting about whether there is a problem, because if, historically, there is a problem. And the other two things that I looked at was other jurisdictions in the county, and I provided that to the commission the last time. Many jurisdictions do not have a planned industrial park ordinance as such. Brevard County does, the city of Rockledge does, the city of Melbourne just has its standard industrial ordinances as such. And examining those, our requirements are pretty similar. For example, the front yard setback of fifty feet, that's what's in Brevard County's and the city of Rockledge. The only difference I've really seen is in the rear yard setback. They had a provision of twenty-five feet where we have fifty feet. So, as a compromise, perhaps twenty-five feet is, in the rear yard is, is something maybe we want to consider, or is this all or nothing? I'm just looking at similarly situated ordinances in Brevard County. I'm looking at the deed restrictions. Certainly, we don't enforce deed restrictions, we can do whatever we want to do, but on the North Brevard Industrial Park, there's a front yard setback of fifty feet, which is what our current code is. On the Enterprise, which is the county, this front yard setback is fifty feet. On the corner, it's fifty feet. And the only, one of those that I see not perhaps in line is where we have fifty feet on a rear yard setback. So, I wouldn't be opposed, and probably changing my position a little bit from the last time, opposed to recommending that change. Because it's in the rear yard, the property behind it, there'll be at least fifty feet between buildings, so I don't see that as a big issue. But the others, based upon the other codes in Brevard County, and based upon the deed restrictions that still apply, no matter what, I don't see really those being changed.
But then again, what is considered the rear in a PID? I mean, we have a strange configuration in the park that you have the rear of the building is actually a long stretch, and so, you, it really depends on the configuration of the current buildings there.
That's true of any lot.
I'm just saying, in our particular, in our area, I'm specifically mentioning the buildings that are in that, the used industrial park, is you have a lot of elongated buildings, that the, well, anyway, I mean, I think that's a good compromise, but. Mr. Richardson.
Two things I'd say, is the economic development director that made the comments was the mayor. It was not the present economic development director, it was the mayor. And secondly, I was asked about this by one of the members of council, and she's, it was, at a, it wasn't for a meeting to discuss that, but she pulled out this undated letter from the city manager to them, the last paragraph said the staff would be able to accept other distances and it not come before council. And I found that paragraph real strange, because it was never placed before us in consideration of this. So, I said, "No, I've never seen that paragraph."
That was a paragraph that was at, being added to this code, is that what you're saying?
No, it was a paragraph at the bottom of the memo, undated memo from the city manager to city council. That was in their council packet.
That's troubling.
But I agree with Roy. Changing the rear yard setback is fine, but when you look at the other industrial parks, I wouldn't change the front setback or anything else. The rear yard setback, I'm okay with.
Mr. Parrish, on page twelve, where you have the grid there, and the distances have been changed, who changed those, the staff or?
The staff.
Okay.
Yeah, we based that on, when I recall, from the variance report for the accessory structure. When we did our research on how that property was developed, most of those buildings there along White Drive were built in the eighties, and at the time, the zoning district had that setback. And it wasn't until nineteen ninety-three that the PID was placed on it with this more restrictive setback. And so, that's what we based this new ordinance on, is going back. So, if that's, if the commission doesn't agree with that, that's something you should recommend.
Like Mr. Richardson, the rear doesn't bother me, but the rest of it does.
Okay, Member Noel Copeland.
So, I was, you said that you agreed with what they said, you agree with what they're saying, but I would say the council didn't say anything, right? They just sent it back. So, I think if they'd given us direction for additional consideration, then we could consider that direction. But I don't think we've been given any additional information to consider. So, I also agree with Member Severs that, you know, if, I would be fine to change the rear to the twenty-five, but I would not agree with changing any of the others. And I think the statement that, you know, we think we're losing business because of this, it has to be backed up with facts. It can't just be an arbitrary statement that we think people are going down the road because of a fifteen-foot difference, especially when over the last twenty years, one person has asked for a variance and gotten it. It's, we don't have twenty people that asked for variances that didn't get them.
There's no rationale for it handed to us.
Right.
There's no rationale for what was handed to us, it was just change it.
Right.
Okay, Secretary Chambers.
I got a question. Explain to me, what are we trying to gain by a footer setback for every foot above fifty feet? What are we trying to, what are we trying to gain by that rule?
It's really an aesthetic regulation. So, the building that's fifty feet high, and it meets that setback of, you know, in this case, right now, it's fifty feet, but for the front, for example, you're looking at it from the street, and now you're gonna reduce it down to thirty-five feet, the building can go up to fifty feet.
Yeah.
And if it goes up to fifty-one feet, then that setback now has to be increased to thirty-six feet, and so on. And it's really just an aesthetic regulation. So, if the city has that kind of standard in other zoning districts around the city, similar, for example, the community commercial zoning district, I believe, has the same kind of standard. So, goes over, if the building is up certain height, then it just has to be further back, or at least that, the building itself has to be further back from the street if it is gonna go above the maximum height.
In other words, you're trying to get more land in the front of the building to put trees or whatever, vegetation or something, is that what?
I really can't say, other than to say that if you're going down, you're just trying to create a certain type of development pattern where you don't have buildings so close to each other that are really tall. I think it, I really can't say that the purpose other than that's, that's gotta be it. And they just want, they just don't want too tall of buildings to have that, too close to each other to create that kind of claustrophobic feel as if in some parts of the city. It's a form, it's a form regulation, so it's not, I think it's more just an aesthetic regulation on us.
And, so, one of the things, so the suggestion from Mr. Severs was to reduce the back setback to fifty feet, correct?
From fifty.
Fifty feet to twenty-five.
Okay, to twenty-five. And, so that would mirror Brevard County's, exactly, correct?
Correct.
So, then on the, oh, the, what do you call it, the title, what is it?
The deed restrictions.
Deed restrictions. We were saying, is the PID with the, now, I'm not talking about, well, I guess it applies to both. The areas that are deed restricted, what are the setbacks, are they higher, are they greater than this?
We have not reviewed the deed restrictions.
Huh?
We have not reviewed the deed restrictions.
Well, but the deed restrictions would prevail.
For the property owners themselves, so that's not something the city.
Right, I know that you don't review the deed restrictions, but I'm just saying that the restrictions from, what do they call that now, which the, the, it's off of US One, it was, we're building a hotel there. What's, what's that area there? Yeah, the name just changed, huh?
Vector space?
Yes. It's not called that anymore.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, whatever, okay. So, my understanding is that had higher deed restrictions on that property. Whereas Space Park or.
Spaceport.
Doesn't, maybe, I don't know. So, when that happens, what if somebody was to not, who actually goes and looks at the deed restrictions on the buffers at all? And if there is a violation in that, then what happens?
It's really the, go ahead.
That would be an action for the community to take upon themselves, and the city would not be involved in a deed restriction action. That's why we don't look at it, because it's not something that the city enforces.
Yeah. But if that was the case, and we were, what if we were to reduce ours past that? Why not mirror whatever the deed restriction currently is and just say, "Fine, now, now there's no arguments." At least if it's, just take a look at it, rather than totally ignore it.
Are you asking so that we can amend the ordinance to be consistent with what maybe they have in the deed restrictions?
Yes. You're looking at, and now, bear in mind, I know that if one has it and one doesn't, I could completely say, you know, look, you can't make everybody consistent. On the other hand, if they, one is deed restricted and the other one isn't, I'm just saying, I'm not trying to create a situation for one, but if, let's just say vector space is more stricter than spaceport, okay, fine, you can't do anything, you resolve to, but if they're the same, or one has deed restriction and one doesn't, I don't know, but, I'm just saying, it's something to look at, at least so that you're not encouraging.
But then what do you do if somebody else has property that they get put into this category and they make their deed restrictions even less? Then do we have to come back, like, that seems backwards.
So, well, it means you'd have to create a new PID, so. All right, fair enough. Member Severs.
With the assistance of the city attorney's office, I was able to get some of the deed restrictions. The North Brevard Industrial Park, which is the closest one towards four oh five, the front yard is fifty feet, the side street is fifty feet. Enterprise Park, which is the county's, deed restrictions are front yard fifty feet, side twenty-five, rear twenty-five, corner fifty feet. And vector space has some very interesting language, saying setbacks not to be less than those setback at the time of the regulations, at the time of recording, vector space, without prior written approval of vector space, which is probably is not valid or enforceable. So, I'm assuming what they're saying is whatever our regulation, PIP regulation was at the time, is the one, the one that's in effect. What this illustrates, and certainly council is correct, deed restrictions are a matter between property owners, and as such, and typically, the city does not mirror its regulations to the same. It can set its own standards as such, so, but that's information as far as what the deed restrictions are.
Member Richardson.
Is there a public hearing on this item?
There will be, because we'll have to close it, and, well, I mean, we'll have to open it to the public here, so we'll just do that now. So, we will open this to the public, we have cards on this.
Stan Johnston.
Mr. Johnston.
Stan Johnston, eight sixty point Setta Avenue, Tyusville, Florida. I didn't really want to be involved in this, but, but now that I see there's some, some good discussion, I thought I would put a card in. Setbacks, twenty-five-foot setback in residential area, that's very common. Let's suppose someone built their house instead of fifteen foot in front of that, and instead of twenty-five foot, they put it down, they put it down, twenty-five minus fifteen is equal to ten foot. How would that look? Just think about in your neighborhood, as you go around corners, you stray ways and so forth like that. So, this front setback. So this front setback, although Brad said aesthetic, and it is aesthetic, but it also is, is a, a feeling of, um, I'm not sure how to say it, but, but it's, it's, it's visual, it's, it's, it's got to do with a lot of things. So when you change, when you change the setback, the front setback, understand what it does to existing buildings and what it's going to look like. It's going to look very strange. So, and for that reason, I want to say is I certainly oppose shortening the front yard setback in, in an area that's already developed, has some development, or that someone can take down a building or add to the building, the front wall, and they can do modification of the building and add to it, because it, it's just, it seems, um, no, it seems strange. So, thank you, that's all I have to add.
Thank you. No, you said that was the only card?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll close this to the public. Member Richardson.
Look on page 15. I make a motion that the front setback remain the same at 50, interior side yard setback remain the same, I think that's 35 or 25? Okay, 35. Side corner at 50, and rear setback be reduced from 50 to 25.
Okay, is there a second?
Wait, do you have a motion on the language on page 13? Are you suggesting we ignore the strikeouts and leave as is?
Yeah, I think.
So the motion is that the only vari- variation to the current code is the rear setback changed to 25?
Yeah.
Chelsea, is that the appropriate way to make the motion?
Yes, that's the notes that we got, yes.
I'll second the motion.
All right. I wanted to, real quick, I wanted to understand the language with, with the strikeouts. Leaving the, before we take a vote, so that I have an understanding, leaving the strikeouts there?
In other words, they're not stricken.
They're not stricken, is that what you're saying?
Right, they will become unstricken.
I have, the motion is to amend only the rear yard setback from 50 feet to 25 feet, leaving all other amendments as original language.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, can we take a vote on this?
Member Hare.
Yes.
Secretary Chambers.
Um, yeah.
Member Richardson.
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland.
Yes.
Member Severs.
Yes.
Chairman Williams.
Yes.
Okay. Kind of a, a 180, kind of, half, part, quarter? I gave one side, so. All right. Yeah, that would be good, it's been there. All right, so if we'll take a, how long, five, 10? All right, five-minute break, and then we'll re, assume. Back, so. If you want to start again? We can be. Hi, I, I thought you heard me, we're waiting on you.
Oh. Excuse me, um.
Are you the only one that did, did everybody hear me? Okay.
I should pay attention. The item B, 9B, on your agenda starts on page 17 of your packet. And that's the draft vision-based comprehensive plan, and this is a transmittal hearing. And the transmittal is a request, it's a public hearing for, to consider whether the amendment or a co- a new comprehensive plan, in this case, should go to the state for review. If you go to the next page, I believe, let me see if here. Here we are. So we added, and on front of the comprehensive plan agenda item, we added a couple items here to give some clarification since the last time you saw this draft. We did give you a, a list of key issues that we originally gave you back in November of 2017, and then how we, or what our approach is, and that's what we described here in this, I'm going to try and describe here in this presentation tonight. And that's on page 20 of your packet. And then, another important document we included in here is on page 22 of your packet, and that is, those are just a list of changes that we made to this draft since you last saw it in November 2017, or actually since City Council saw it in, uh, December 2018, excuse me. At that time, council saw this and agreed with our approach, and went ahead and gave us direction to go forward with scheduling transmittal hearings to get public input. On page 23 of your packet, all right, actually, I, let me just briefly go over a couple of the items here that have been changed since then. We provided mainly clarifications to certain policies in here, like, number four, we clarified the neighborhood land use category and what the maximum density really is. I'm going to explain, though, in that particular land use category, we are freezing the underlying land uses underneath that. So there are a lot of land uses, currently they have a maximum of two units per acre or five units per acre, those are being frozen, and I'll explain in a moment what I mean by that. We updated or removed sea level rise scenario maps, we didn't believe that that was necessary last time we went through that process with the year or the evaluation appraisal review with the state. We included a reference to what's called missing middle, that you didn't see that last time, I'll explain what that is in the presentation. On page 23, we did add a, a statement under the multimodal policy 1.3.1, related to golf cart crossings. That was a request of City Council, they asked us, we're going to consider all modes of traffic, transportation, why not also include that, that mode as well, and some communities do that. So that's something we could explore. We definitely, we, we included a policy 1.3.3 related to exploring options to reducing parking numbers in activity centers, such as a downtown neighborhood areas. I'll explain a little bit about parking solutions in there as well. And we also included something about aut- autonomous vehicles in that same policy. It's something that American Planning Association is recommending that comprehensive plans address in some way. And what that means is, what they're saying is that they, you'll see probably a need for more drop-off zones as part of development regulations, and probably not a real need for new parking spaces. That's not to say parking spaces are obsolete, it just says that you probably won't need the high ratios that we have in our code. We carry, we just, and the next one, we just carried over a policy related to compatible uses in water, in the vicinity of the municipal potable water levels. The last two, though, 17 and 18, on page 22, 23 of your packet, I promised you that we would propose language to you. We worked with the Public Works Department and recommend language that I've laid on to your dais there. It's just behind the brochure, and you will see it, it's related to policies, stormwater policy 1.3.1, stormwater strategy 1, and we've added a new strategy 3. And so we will ask that you consider that inclusion into this comprehensive plan for transmittal to the state for review. On page 24, we gave you a list of our answers to all the planning and zoning commission questions that we handled or received in some way in the past year and a half. So we tried to give you a comprehensive answer to each of those, list of, or, excuse me, a comprehensive list to all to the, all those questions that we received from you. And if there wasn't an answer in the minutes, we tried to provide them. And that's on page 24 of your packet. I do want to mention that on page 28 of your packet, I want to clarify, and one of my answers here, I stated that I provided a document comparing the comprehensive plan, current comprehensive plan, to the draft 24 comprehensive plan to Member Severs. He requested a comparison, a strike through on your line, and what I provided to him was a version of the new plan with highlights in it. And what I mean by that is we highlighted all the policies, goals, objectives and policies in the new draft comprehensive plan based on their source. So policies were highlighted in one color if they were proposed by our consultant during this process. They were highlighted in a different color if they were carried over from the current plan. And we tried to identify where that policy came from. And then we also highlighted those policies that staff suggested be added to the comprehensive plan. So we did not provide that to the rest of the commission, we certainly can do that. The reason I didn't do that is because Member Severs came on board on the commission about halfway through this process, and you had, we had given you several presentations, except for Mr. Richardson, obviously, presentations on the new policies that we're giving you at the beginning of this process, or that we were proposing. So I can certainly provide that to you if you'd like to see that. But again, that is not a comparison, we did not do a strike through underlying version of both, of the comprehensive plan. So the comprehensive plan begins on page 31 of your packet. And I'm not going to refer you to certain sections of the comprehensive, I'm not going to allow you to do that on your own. I am just going to suggest that if you have a copy of the outline on page thirty-three of your packet, that you, that's what I'm really going to be following. I did, I do appreciate a lot of the questions that I received and the thorough review that I received from some of the commissioners on this. That was very helpful. It's always good to have an extra set of eyes on this. I do not have written responses to them to provide to you, because I did receive them on Monday and some yesterday. But I, if you, at the end of this presentation, you have questions, you want to go through them line by line, or you have specific questions, a particular question that you had, and you want to see what my answer would be, I could certainly, I have some prepared answers. And obviously, if it's, if I don't have enough detail or information, I'll have to get back to you. I did see, look through all the questions that I received since Monday, and I feel like there's some commonality on a lot of the questions. So I tried, in my presentation, to address them not individually, but as a theme. So for example, I saw that there were, I know there are a lot of questions, concerns about what missing middle, what neighborhood, what the neighborhood land use is. And so I tried to address that in some way in the presentation. I'll show you what I mean. Another theme I saw was the question about freezing density and how density is calculated. So I tried to address that as well in the comprehensive plan, or in the presentation, rather. Sustainability was a big issue. So I think that is throughout the comprehensive plan, and I'm going to try and show that and demonstrate that in the presentation. Reuse was brought up, the reuse line. So I'll try and show what we have related to that. Neighborhood plans, that is kind of my response to some of the questions I've received. So I'll demonstrate, I'll explain exactly what that means and how that might be helpful for us as far as future planning. Conservation was, I received several questions about that, so I'll try and answer that as well. TDR, that is transfer development rights and what that means and how it works. We current, we're not proposing anything new about that. That is actually in the current comprehensive plan. We just carried it over. So I'll explain a little bit what that means, how that works. And I'll definitely try and explain our strategy implementing this comprehensive plan. There's one particular citywide objective that relates to how the land uses will be applied and how the plant, our current planned development rezoning process will be incorporated into that implementation process, and how that will benefit us and benefit the community. Because I believe we'll see, at least at that, at those stages, we'll be able to see a concept of what's going on, as opposed to just an outright rezoning a property and not knowing exactly what's going to happen on it. I'd try and explain a little benefit behind that. So those are the themes I saw in a lot of the questions. So with that, I'll try and go through the presentation as quickly as I can and then allow for some questions. So as you recall, we started this process when we were required to do what's called the evaluation appraisal review or report, is what the state calls it now, back in 2017. We finished that process, and really, the only thing we had to address was what's called peril of flood. And those are the flood policies related to sea level rise. That was addressed, and that was adopted, and we've rolled that over into this new draft comprehensive plan. Through that process, though, we decided, parallel to the year update back in 2017, to go forward and see if we can make major changes to the rest of the comprehensive plan if necessary. So we did some, we hired a consultant to do some visioning exercises back in the fall of 2017. As a result of that, there was a vision document that was approved, presented to you and to the city council in January or February of 2018. It was approved. And it was, it basically focused on three key areas. It asked us to really focus on those areas as part of the update to the comprehensive plan. And that is our gateways, our waterfront, and our downtown. Let me go back real quick. So then, the process then is, in 2018, we spent that year drafting this plan as a result of those outcomes that we got from the visioning exercises. And so here we are in 2019, requesting, bringing it before you for possible implementation. On this slide, I just wanted to describe some of the most voted items. I've yeah, excuse me. Laurie's going to see if we can get the presentation up on your screen, so you can follow along as I go through. Otherwise, you can minimize the presentation. You can look at your agenda as well, so. So what I'm showing here are the key findings and strategies that came out of the visioning exercises. And this is what was most voted on, basically. These are the things that, things that the community, those workshops are really asking us to look at, and that is the city needs to develop an effective redevelopment infill strategy. I believe we tried to do that and really expand on those infill policies in this new draft comprehensive plan. Focus on a vibrant downtown, which is an essential element in the overall economic development strategy. The city needs to reimagine three key areas, which I've already mentioned, downtown, waterfront, and gateways. And these initiatives will effectively reposition the city in a very positive way. So those are the things that the community was really focusing on. And we tried to address that in this plan. So we also looked at population estimates. Now, you know, a few years ago, we were dipping in population, then we started going up, and we have to rely on what the University of Florida projects as far as population by statute whenever we do an update to our comprehensive plan. And our historic population growth has always been about 1%, maybe just above that. But they indicated to us that our population is probably going to be at one of their middle curve. They have three curves they usually publish. And so that's a little higher than our normal or historic curve. So we estimate potentially a population to be 66,000 at the end of this planning horizon. With that, we are certainly experiencing pressure into our marginal lands. I did receive a question as to whether this map here that indicate in the plan is accurate. Some of it is. A lot of the data you see here in this, this map is, comes from a variety of different sources, including St. John's City and other sources. And a lot of, you see on the green here, for example, that is a conservation land use. That was originally put on there and approved back, I believe, in the late eighties. It was something that was created as a result of some data that was given to the city or the city utilized from the federal government, Department of Interior, I believe. And that was a more national wetland inventory, was applied, used to create this land use category. And then we have a policy that was adopted at that time that said that as development occurs, that you ground-truth that wetland, and then you adjust those boundaries accordingly. That policy has not changed since then very much, and we have carried it over. So we're not proposing changes to that. It also, so with that, we the, again, we're experiencing some pressure on these marginal lands, and we are trying to propose some policies and land use categories in this new plan that will help alleviate that pressure, we believe. We also have a standing or a current policy right now in our land development regulations to allow for incentivize some clustering of subdivisions. So in other words, property owner comes or an applicant comes in and wants to put in a subdivision, we're trying to encourage them to cluster those lots into smaller lots in a certain area of the property, thereby preserving another area of that property, especially in some of these marginal lands. So we have that tool in place. I think you've experienced it already with a few applications before you. That's gone through what's called the planned development rezoning process. Obviously, I guess from your experience, it certainly could be improved, and we are, we certainly, like any ordinance, it certainly could be updated. But we are considering, requesting that that tool be carried over and be utilized in the implementation phase of this plan. And I'll explain in a moment. So, but the benefit of having, allowing that policy and allowing for clustering of subdivisions or clustering of lots in a subdivision is that you reduce the amount or length of roadways and other infrastructure that is dedicated to city. And that obviously reduces the cost to city and its liabilities, and obviously conserve some open space. Key issues that we found, obviously, the population growth in the marginal lands I've already mentioned, but exclusionary zoning. So we have land uses and zoning districts that are very exclusive. They are retail-only or commercial-only, residential-only, things of that nature. They don't allow for a lot of mixture. We do have some zoning districts and land use categories that allow that, but they're very limited. I think the most prominent one we have right now is the downtown land use category. But even that has some sub-districts that kind of regulate where things are going, where uses should go. So it's very use-based. So the plan here we're proposing is, would allow for some flexibility of mixed-use type land use categories and mixed-use type development, with caveats, of course. And those caveats being good urban design standards and land development regulations. There, we found an issue for retail vacancy. We have a lot of vacant retail buildings around the city, and that is partly because of the market. And so we are proposing that mixed-use concept in our comprehensive plan for a lot of the gateway quarters. That's the commercial quarters, that's US One, that's Hopkins, that's Garden, that's for
Fifty.
Columbia and Chaney. High parking and setback standards. So for example, we have some very high standards for multifamily residential. And in fact, we have the highest ratios of all the other jurisdictions in Brevard County. But we just certainly have some need to maybe adjust or increase the ratios in certain other uses as well. So this plan asks us to reevaluate that. Florida Department of Transportation has approved several years ago what's called complete streets policy, and with that, a context-sensitive classifications program. And what that means is they are going to be looking at their corridors that they maintain holistically and taking into account the development typologies and the roadway conditions. So rather than only the character races of the roadway, so they're going to be looking at local plans to help inform them as what those classifications would be. So for example, a corridor throughout the city would probably fall through in what they've identified, created as a three, a C3R or in a C5 transect. What that means is more of a suburban-type residential transect. That's how they'll classify a lot of our FDOT-maintained roadways. What that means is, is that they will do programming based on that classification. What the city, or what we are proposing in this draft plan is to work in coordination with them on that. And that the current plan really encourages those types of suburban-style classifications that FDOT would most likely be classifying our roads. And our current comprehensive plan really limits a more compact-type development, especially on those quarters. So the plan that we're suggesting tonight would reverse that. And so would try to discourage strict development, but encourage more compact development. So try to work with FDOT to maybe have those segments of their roadways classified into more urban style, not a really high-intensity urban, but more like a downtown, like you see where we are, what we have right now. We believe that what we proposed tonight is consistent with several other plans, including the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization's long-term plans. They did the vision plan back in 2015. They are going through a process of updating it right now. This is the LRTB, the Long Range Transportation Plan. We believe it's also consistent with our recently approved Economic Development Strategic Plan. They also recommended strategies such as a new, more flexible land development regulations. We also believe it's consistent with the Community Redevelopment Agency's Downtown Master Plan, which was approved in the early 2000s. It also includes a recommendation that we approve what's called a form-based code, which is a more detailed land development regulation that's more predictable. I gave, we gave you a couple presentations on that. We'll certainly do it again. And we also believe this plan is consistent with various other small-area plans and other studies that have been published by the city in the past few years. We looked at the last time, back in 2010, when we did the year, there was a vision statement that was created. We tweaked it based on the results of the visioning workshops. And so I'm not going to read through this, but we tweaked it to include statements like pedestrian feel, trail town, which is something the city was recently, a couple of years ago, I believe, was designated by the state of Florida, especially since we have, I think we're the only city in the state that has three regional trails converging into our city. You'll see on the left side of the screen a outline of the, of the, of the comprehensive plan, and that, we're trying to mimic here the outline that I showed you on page thirty-three of your packet. That's the table of contents in the comprehensive plan. I just went through the current, I'm sorry, the introduction of the plan. But now I'm going to go through the people. That's about the context. So it describes demographics, housing, infrastructure, and integration of land use mobility. We included a much more robust narrative at the beginning of this plan, as opposed to just a list of policies that we currently have. It kind of helps justify, provide context for the policies that are, that follow. The consultant that we worked with, Kane and Associates, which is based out of Orlando, provided several presentations to the workshops and to the city council afterwards about placemaking. And that's really trying to encourage the city to come up, do development that is, that makes the city more memorable. So if you remember the places that are most memorable to you, and I held a meeting just recently on Monday with some residents about this, and they threw out ideas, or threw out some other places that bring some memory to them that they like, Winter Park, Balden Park, and other locations around the state of Florida, and I'm sure other areas outside the state, that they remember because of how the development pattern there is. The consultant was asking us that, to provide, to include some policies in here that help create that kind of environment for us as well. And so you can see some examples they threw in here, outdoor cafes, some outdoor street activity, things of that nature, a non-auto-dependent type of development, if possible. The downtown land use, we are, the consultant proposed expanding the current downtown land use beyond the Community Redevelopment Agency boundaries, further west into, to encompass the entire original core of the city. And you can see here, this is the original block pattern. This is the pre-World War II block pattern in the city. And then everything beyond that is that post-World War II suburban-type development pattern. So it's a different type of feel, different type of development pattern. It lends itself to not having to worry about creating arterial streets through it. You, traffic really disperses itself through there. And you can certainly create a very pedestrian, walkable neighborhood in this development pattern. So we introduced a policy in here that would discourage us to recommend approval of vacating right-of-way, maintaining those cross-connections, including alleyways, if possible. This downtown land use now, if we expand further to the west here, will help bring that area further into the downtown. Now, if this is approved, we would go forward with what we already suggested to you, anti-city council, form-based code, or something similar to that, which would be more of an urban design standard. Part of that would require a heavy involvement with the community to come up with a, a development plan, basically, a regulatory plan, to help identify where appropriate areas for increased height would be that are appropriate. Some areas in this area are probably not going to be appropriate for increased height, where certain types of development typologies should be located along those streets, where residential is best, and what type of residential as well. So again, the traditional street grid is really something you want to preserve. It creates, it can help create that memorable identity and encourages multiple types of residential. So the downtown character images the consultant provided to us during the presentations was, try and find a way to create that open space, that activity center. That's usually something you remember, you remember when you go to a memorable place. So this is all lends itself to the idea of placemaking that they advocated during the workshops. The outdoor seating and cafes, the little pocket parks, the street frontage, bringing the buildings closer to the street, allowing for height in some areas. The gateway corridors. So again, this is So again, this is, I just threw in examples here, you know, segments of Garden Street, Chaney, and you can see that here in that, that beige color. That's the proposed land use category. Now, it's a mixed-use land use category. So it would allow commercial, not, and residential, or a mix of both. Again, you would need, the caveat is provide, have, adopt some good design guidance, urban design standards for street frontage, especially if you could allow mixed-use development and sharing of parking spaces. And we've included several policies related to multimodal transportation options. So instead of just being totally dependent on automobiles or whether there's enough capacity on a road, because it's very difficult, if you can imagine, we've already got Chaney as a four-lane highway with a center turn line. I can't, I think a lot of people were concerned that there may be a possibility of widening out the six lanes, or even parts of US-1 being wide out even further. I think you'd want to discourage that, if possible. Make that as a last resort, and that's what we presided, inserted into the comprehensive plan. So look at other alternatives, access management, put in bike lanes, if possible, put in trails, put in better sidewalks, bring the buildings closer, allow that mixed-use development, make it so that development, when you are going to a development or are living in a development, that you don't have to rely on a vehicle for every activity you need to do. So hopefully, the new development won't dump as many trips onto a roadway as, versus compared to now, where we only allow single uses along those corridors. Allow cross-accesses between properties as well. So these are some images that the consultant proposed here as ideas that could look, that you can promote through land development regulations that help implement these policies. Good street frontage, bringing buildings closer to the street. You don't necessarily have to have the buildings right up to the street, especially on an arterial like Chaney. You could certainly do something like this, where there may be some limited amount of parking, parallel parking between the building. But definitely, certainly require some kind of landscaping to help green your quarters instead of make them so gray. And then some, here's another example as well, and definitely certainly want to address signage and aesthetics. We are proposing consolidating several land use categories into a few. So we are recommending in where the land, the new downtown land use category will be located, it would actually consolidate the land uses that are located on this, in this area. Downtown, it's currently there, the urban mixed-use, the commercial high-intensity land use, commercial low-intensity, those are, the commercial low and high are strictly retail. Residential high is strictly, you know, multifamily-type residential, residential medium. Consolidate it all into this new land use category downtown. That's an expanded area, which I showed earlier. But the specifics as to where those uses will go, or development projects will go, or types of development will go, would be determined later on when we come up with the land development regulations. Again, we did the same thing with the neighborhood land use category. We consolidated five land use categories into this one big land use category. And the reason is, we showed this in one of your presentations before at a previous meeting, we tried to show that there's, the only significant difference between these land use categories is the density. And that seems, that's the only question that ever pops up every time someone comes in for a land use request. And so what we're suggesting, though, is that the density on those properties be frozen. And so if someone wants to come in and increase those densities, the process is still the same. It's a land use change, or it's a comprehensive plan amendment process. You still have the public hearing now. The only difference really is the name of the category. And the reason why is because we've created a category here that's all-encompassing of all the descriptions you saw in those five year, five categories here. I think in, in this area, I received several questions about this. I'm sorry, excuse me, let me go back to the neighborhood one. There was a lot of confusion about how density is calculated. Density is calculated on a parcel-by-parcel basis. So if you have a ten-acre piece of property, and you're allowed to have ten units per acre, you can have a hundred units there. Or if my math is wrong, correct me if I'm wrong. But I mean, if you've got a three-and-a-half-acre piece of property, and your, your land use maximum density per acre is, is ten, then your, your maximum is thirty-five acres, or thirty-five units in that case. So that's how it's traditionally calculated. And then when you split up the piece of property, what's left, then their density is calculated for that piece of property, because they sold off that piece to someone else, and now we got to determine, you know, they want to propose to put something there, we're going to figure it out what their density is now. That's traditionally how it's done around the state of Florida. Now, some places have suggested doing something a little different, and I just want to go back to the downtown one. We introduced something there that's more like a, a land, a density calculation in there that's more of a grab from it. It's not per parcel. But that will be determined during the regulatory, development of the regulation plan. So the whole district is X number of acres. It's allowed, we're proposing thirty units per acre, so that's a X number of residents or units that could be allocated for that entire district. So as you come in with a new development, you, you take from it. You don't calculate density by, by parcel-by-parcel, it's a little different. So the last man in, obviously, is going to get hurt, but that's why you need the regulatory plan in place to help deal with that. I don't think you're going to ever come to that situation. Right now, in the downtown land use category that we have in place now, we are nowhere near close to exceeding or coming close to meeting the maximum density on that land use category. And if you'd like, I can certainly show you some calculations we did on that. The, the last example here of consolidating land use categories is the residential and manufacturing land use category, and that's primarily in the south part of the city where the airport is, Grissom Parkway, the PID zoning, that we just talked about earlier tonight. So we consolidated the industrial, planned industrial park land use, public sub by public land use, which is the airport, commercial high-intensity land use, and they're located in those areas, and it's consolidated into this research and manufacturing land use. We worked with the Economic Development Director on this, and this is a great tool, we believe, to help promote this area. So like our, Orange County has the Innovation Zone. It's a huge area that they market to say, hey, come and do business here. So this is something that we could, to help us market this giant area as well. We believe it'll reduce the number of land use changes. We're not proposing changing zoning underneath this. That's something we could always talk about later, but that's not what we're proposing here. Again, you see on the map here, the existing land use cat, map, and what it would look like if this was approved on the right side, a much more simplified map. This is a, the future land use map as proposed in the comprehensive plan for the entire city. And as you can see, the research and manufacturing land use is primarily in the bottom, but there are some areas around the city that also has that same land use. Mobility. We have a transportation element in the current comprehensive plan. We renamed it Mobility, and the current plan only talks about roadway capacity, roads and how wide they are, and how much volume of traffic put on them. Well, the trend is, talk about other modes of transportation. Don't rely on just wide roadway widening capacity. Also, the state used to have, require us to have a level of service standard for roadway capacity. We don't have to have that anymore. We're not proposing, we, in this draft, we didn't propose it not to take it out, but we are proposing additional policies related to complete streets and really promoting that. That's recreating our streets to be designed so that all modes of traffic, can be accommodated all modes of transportation. Having a robust bicycle and pedestrian plan, a good, a robust transit plan. Again, how wide is wide enough? You can see there, the bicyclists having the navigator negotiate going through all the six lanes of traffic to get to the other side. Is that really how you want your city? I've mentioned this, I think maybe last year, or maybe Trevor might have mentioned this in one of our presentations, last, this organization called Smart Growth America, about ten years ago, they came out with the study of all the cities around the nation, around the country. And they, and then they updated it years afterwards with, they just analyzed the metropolitan statistical, statistical areas, and that includes, in our example, Palm Bay, Melbourne, Titusville. And they analyzed accidents and deaths, pedestrian accidents and deaths. And so they ranked, using a methodology they came up with, how dangerous some of these MSAs around the country are. And this time around, this was last year they had updated it, our MSA is number three in the nation, as the most dangerous MSA, dangerous by design. And what that means is, we've designed our community to be dangerous for pedestrians. That's, that's the point that they're trying to make here. And in fact, Orlando's number one, Deltona, Daytona Beach, or Beach MSA is number two. We're number three, and several other Florida MSAs are also in the top-ten list, and we continually, every time they update this, this study, a lot of MSAs in the state of Florida are on the top-ten. So it's really embarrassing for FDOT, and when this first came out, FDOT was, was really beside themselves. We do so much to try and promote safety, but yet, here we are, we keep getting on this list. So that's why, in the first slides I show you, context classifications, that's FDOT's response to that. They want to identify how segments on the, on roads that they maintain are classified, and then deal with the safety issues segment by segment, based on that classification. So in other words, a roadway that is classified as urban, like what we want, they'll design or redevelop those roads as they go through their project planning over the years to be that context. That provides more safety. They'll consider, if our plan says we want more pedestrian-type and urban-scale-type development and mixed-use development along those corridors in this fashion, they'll work with us to respond to that. That's a long-term process. This is not an overnight fix. So what we included in our approach as far as mobility is that we did not change the level of service for arterial and collector roads. We added new multimodal-related policies. We added more robust policies related to complete streets. We added block perimeter policies, especially in the downtown, and we added more access-management related language. So that's going to ask us to really evaluate our land development regulations. Housing, excuse me. So housing, this is something that has been, it seems to be some concern for some people, especially as I, when I brought up the, the term "missing middle" and what that means. So the housing element and some of the other policies and other parts of the comp plan that deal with housing, we are required by statute to address affordable housing in some way. And we've also definitely expanded our historic preservation policies, not just in this element, but in another element, just dedicated just to historic preservation, and that was with the help of another consultant. But as far as what we're seeing here, what we're suggesting here is housing typologies, this is hopefully to help address affordable housing, not just for the real, you know, poor, but just those who can't even afford right now the quarter-million-dollar, fifty-foot-wide single-family home lots that are being developed now, or, or the twelve-hundred to fifteen-hundred rent for a two-bedroom apartment-type development that's being built now. It seems like that's the only type of development that's typically built. And so this is something that AARP and other organizations are really advocating, that communities kind of address this issue in some way, allow for the types of development, housing typologies that aren't, that stop being built after World War II. And we certainly have a lot of examples in our city of duplexes, sixplexes, fourplexes, things of that nature. In fact, in one of our presentations at the previous meeting, we showed you an example of that in La Cita, if you recall. So that's what our, the policies are trying to promote. Now, I did get a question from residents on Monday about, does that mean that a vacant lot in my subdivision can potentially be rezoned, allow duplex? No, that's not what this is advocating. What this is saying is that, let's say, you got an infill piece of property, it's vacant next to an already-approved and developed subdivision, you know, it's just vacant, it's next to a road, it's two acres maybe, can't really do a lot of subdivision, single-family homes in there, but a big apartment complex. It's got, it's next to the infrastructure that's there, available. That's, that's a good, qualifies as an infill develop, or parcel. So why not allow them to build certain types of, small types of housing in that, in that case? And that's what this is kind of advocating in the, in the sense. All that would be determined through the regulatory plan that we would recommend as part of the downtown land use, and also neighborhood plans. So we have a strategy in here to ask us to develop neighborhood, neighborhood plans around the city and address issues like that. Natural resources. So we consolidated a lot of policies related to open space and environmental policies into this area of the comprehensive plan called natural resources. We are not suggesting changing the conservation land use. We did create a conservation land use, but we just kind of carried over what was already in our current plan into this new category. So as I showed you in the map earlier, the green on the marginal lands map, that, that green is really not, is not changing. We do have a policy in the current comp plan that's being carried over that says wetlands that have been identified as five acres or more should be dedicated and or preserved through easement to St. John's Water Management District, or through adoption of the conservation land use category. I did receive several comments or questions about the conservation land use, and I think what, I'll, I'll address the transfer development rights of density in a moment. So public facilities. We carried over a lot of those elements related to transportation, potable water, sewer, these are stormwater, solid waste, schools, these are things that are required by statute for us to address in some way by, because of concurrency. So we just carried it over, and that's the last half of the comprehensive plan. The first half is totally dedicated to transportation and land use. And the reason for that is because we don't see them as mutually exclusive, and that's the trend you see in a lot of comprehensive plans now. They affect each other. So the second half of this plan is really all the other stuff that the state requires us to address. But it's important, because this is about capital improvements planning and maintaining our infrastructure to help provide services as growth comes into the city. I have, one question I received about area critical concern, which you've heard about earlier today, and reuse lines. I, I threw in here the map of the city's area critical concern, which comes from the comprehensive plan, we also inserted in the comprehensive plan. So you can see the boundaries there, generally. And then we also threw in a, a map here that illustrates the location, generally, of the reuse lines. So you can see them in relation to the area critical concern. So I just want you to be aware of that. I know that might be a question of Commissioner Reivers, because he proposed a few questions about that. Here we go. Okay, so concurrency. Again, the state came back and said, some of the standard concurrency requirements are now optional. You don't have to have transportation-related concurrency. You also do not have to have parks concurrency. We're not suggesting getting rid of it, we're just suggesting changing it to make it more, make more sense for us. So parks, I think we've already presented to you a previous presentation that stated that our current parks-level service standard requires us to have eight acres per thousand people. We've got well over that right now. There are calculated seven-hundred-plus acres in the city, and we only need three-hundred-and-eighty, based on our population. So as, you're not going to see new parks as a result. So the consultant that we work with recommended, and here, here's another that demonstrates how you'll never see that dark green really move up, exceeding that light green there in that graph here. It'll take a long time for our population to get up to a point where it'll exceed our level of service standard, thereby requiring us to put in new district parks in the city. So what the, the consultant suggested to us was come up with additional different policies, or level of service standards, that say things like, provide a small park within a quarter-mile of walking distance of residences. So that will help enable us come up with land development regulations when we do that evaluation, that will say, for example, you're coming with a new subdivision, is it going to be located near, within a quarter-mile of an existing park? If not, incorporate one into your development. And doesn't mean that we, it'll have to be dedicated to the city, that's up to us if we want to do that, but we could certainly ask the pub, the property owner, the applicant, say, incorporate it in there. But, we could certainly ask the pub, the property owner, the applicant, say, incorporate it in there for public use. So that's what the consultant was suggesting here. Utility service area, we have an inter, required to have an intergovernmental coordination element. We really did not make a lot of changes to that, kind of tweaked the language in there. But it does ask us to come up with, or really work with Brevard County on coming up with a master land use or annexation plan. To kind of coordinate the incorporation of properties as they become annexed. And determine what's the appropriate land uses as they can become annexed. We did not give you the strategies yet, or the implementation matrix was at the very end of the comprehensive plan. This is just an example of what it might look like. This might be revised. But it should, we want to try and show what the strategy is, who's responsible for it, and whether it's going to, could be implemented in a short-term or a long-term phase. So some of the strategies, I just wanted to mention, we have, we're going, we are recommending that we come up with development design standards, if these land use categories are approved and this comprehensive plan is approved, to allow mixed-use development especially. And these standards would address building orientation, frontage standards, and access management. So instead of a, an arterial road that has a driveway to every property within every 20 or 30 feet, which makes a very dangerous road for a pedestrian, why not consolidate those driveways into a few? So that a property, several properties can be accessed by one driveway. So that's access management, that's one example. One other strategy is to come up with a multimodal master plan. We are in that process right now. The city council will see if a draft version of this plan on June 11th. The, but this is, you know, part one, could, there could be an additional part two to it. Right now, it's only focused on trails, bicycle lanes, and opportunities for pedestrian connectivity, connectivity. So I could certainly show you that draft, if you'd like to see that, once it's ready. The consultant recommended that we do a, a recreation and open space master plan. Did not give us specifics as to what that really would be, that's going to be up to us. Now, help identify where, you know, parks could be, especially if we come up with regulations related to new subdivisions, having to put something in part of it. We are almost done with our resiliency strategic plan. On May 28th, there will be a presentation before city council of the final draft of that. And that will include a vulnerability analysis of our infrastructure and of private land, and recommendations on how to deal with that. The recommend, another strategy the consultant recommended was to update our waterfront master plan. And that's really in reference to our 2007 US One Quarter Master Plan. Especially as it relates to trails. At the time, there was a recommendation to put in a, kind of, a trail along the waterfront as a great amenity. And so the consultant even picked up on that as well, and recommend that, recommended that in the plan. Additional strategies, again, I've already mentioned, developing neighborhood plans throughout the city in different areas, to help deal with or guide on land use and development decisions. And we currently have a few examples. We have the River Edge Drive Small Area Plan, the Indian River City Neighborhood Plan. And we also have the South Street Small Area Plan, just a few examples. And that helps us, helps us provide some clarity as to what land uses or rezonings are appropriate where, as they come in, in addition to our comprehensive plan and land development regulations. And then again, the, obviously the adoption strategy. So, again, I think you, we brought this to you, you've seen this slide before, where we would utilize our existing plan development zoning, rezoning process, with a concept plan part of a master plan. I think it needs to be updated, especially if we're going to allow mixed-use development projects along our commercial quarters. So it should have some standards of how that should be addressed. So we would recommend that we update our PDE process to include that. We showed this slide to you once before as well. So, the implementation strategy. If the plan is adopted, with the land use designations are not automatically put on properties. So the first scenario would be, if a property owner wants to, has a, for example, a commercial lease zone property, and they have a commercial land use on it right now, they want to change it to a residential, or, or do a mixed use. That triggers scenario one, where they have to do a land use amendment. We would recommend that it be applied, that we would apply the land use as approved by this comprehensive plan. They would submit a master plan through the PDE process, the plan development process, thereby providing to us a concept that we can all look at, so we can understand what's probably going to go there, as part of that process. That, still, you have the legislative process, remember the land uses changes are legislative process, and then the rezonings is a quadruped digital process. Those are two different actions, two different tests, as a review. But, through this process, we'd at least have a chance to see what's going to go there, and then, at that time, be able to address site plan related questions, and be able to impose certain conditions that we believe are at site plan related, such as additional buffers maybe, additional access restrictions, whatnot. The current process, I think, is kind of difficult for you to handle, because right now, you get a rezoning request or a land use cha, change, and from commercial to residential, and they're not obligated to provide to us a concept plan. This scenario would require that. And that gives you some, some information that you can go by. Scenario two is, after adoption of the comprehensive plan, now we've gone forward, we've adopted the land use categories on everybody's properties. But the zonings haven't been changed, and we have not come up with our urban design standards yet. So someone has a commercially zoned piece of property, and they want to change it to a residential, or do a mixed use. They just go through the PDE process, the plan development process. They're still providing to us a concept plan that we can look at, and be able to have enough information to be able to make a decision on. The third scenario is, we've completed everything. We have adopted a plan, adopted the land uses on the property, and we've come up with our urban design standards. We're done, we've got the land code done, fixed. We know what to expect on properties, because this is what the community has decided is appropriate on those properties, along those corridors, along those gateways, along those street frontages. Developer comes in and says, you know, I want to do X type of development or type of use. Well, if it's consistent with the land development regulations as approved, through, with the approval and workshops with the public, they can go, and go forward with the site plan. That's no different today. So you have a zoning district, ready on a piece of property, and someone wants to build a subdivision there, and they don't need to go through a rezoning, they could just go through with the site plan. Does not require right now, public hearing. Want to build a commercial strip center, and the commercial zoning's on there right now? They can go forward right now with a site plan, not a public hearing. That's what scen, scenario three is. However, if they want to deviate from that, we would need to come up with some ways to deal with that issue, whether it's coming before you, or just simply going before the border of adjustment as a variance. Transfer development rights. There are two types. So, a transfer development right is transferring, for example, residential units from one property to another. That's all it is. Another example is transferring dense, development rights, such as density, from one part of a property to a different part of a property. An example of that would be in our wetlands overlay that we have, or conservation land use, for example. Someone has, have their properties in a wetland, and they have some density rights on that wetland, very small. They don't want to mitigate that, they don't want to build in there. Well, they want to use, utilize that density. They can transfer that density to the upland. That's what that means. Transferring from one property to another. You have a downtown piece of property that's maxed out in density, but they want to add more floors and more residential units to it. Well, they can buy density from someone else's property out in the suburban areas that are, or the agricultural areas, and transfer it to their property. That's the concept. We've only experienced that once, in our city. We're not recommending changes to this, this is just being carried over. So, we're not proposing this, this is not new. But that's the concept behind it. And that was, I'm just responding to some questions I received about that. Sustainability, and I'm almost done here. Sustainability, and green building, and, and greening our city. When we first started doing this, we looked at what the American Planning Association's program has. They have a sustainability program, and they award, or rank communities based on how sustainable their comprehensive plans are. And so we looked at those award-winning comprehensive plans. And we unabashedly tried to mimic them, because we really wanted to strive for that. We saw a lot of policies in our current comprehensive plan that were good, related to sustainability, but they probably just need to be clarified or expounded on some more. So that's what we tried to do throughout the document. We didn't create a special element called "sustainability," or "green," or "environmental," this is throughout the document. So, compact development, clustering subdivisions, or lots in subdivisions, mixed-use development, that's sustainability, that's preserving land. We have a very robust greenhouse emissions objective and several policies after that. And that's our citywide development objective 1.5. We also have sustainability design policies. And we are actually going forward with trying to apply to the Florida Green Building Coalition to get certified as a Florida Green Building city. And then we have coastal management policy 4.1.4. And that, LID means Low-Impact Development. I received several questions about that, what that means. An example is a bioswale. So a parking lot, for example, can have lots of pervious pavement in it, to help get credit for stormwater, to help allow water to percolate through it, instead of allowing it to run off into a large pond, that, thereby reducing the size of the pond, for example. Bioswale is an example of a landscape area or a drainage area along the right-of-way, for example, that has lots of vegetation in it. So that helps absorb some of the drainage or water that, that runs off in that area. I can certainly show you examples of that. The state asked us to consider this and adopt it in our land development code. So, we'll review that and approve that. We have examples of it right now that we encourage in our downtown. And then our mobility element policies, that I've already talked about, that all is sustainable, addresses sustainability. So, with, with that, I mean, we, we believe that the questions from you, that we received and from the public, are not insurmountable. They go above and beyond the minimum state requirements. We can certainly work with you, even after, let's say you recommend approval for transmittal to the city, and the city, or council rather, and the council approves that transmittal. It goes to the state for their review. We can continue to work and tweak this plan, it's not a problem. We did that last time when we did the year, that wasn't an issue. It just means that, when we make changes to it while the state's reviewing it, when it finally comes back before you for adoption, when we send it to the state to get certified, we have to tell them what those changes are, so they can check it. Make sure we didn't do anything out of the ordinary. The reason why we're asking for it to be reviewed by the state at this point is because we really want to see what they think. We do not believe we're inconsistent with any state statute. We really want to see what their planners think, as far as whether we're in the wrong direction, or whether they can provide some recommendations to us. We will receive, after their review, possibly an objections report. We'll have to address those, and then send it back to them with any changes. That's how it works. So then after they're okay with everything, then we can go ahead with our adoption hearings. Then it gets sent to the state again, they certify it, and then it becomes effective. So that's how that process works. So, we don't believe some of the, the questions that we received here are, are insurmountable for us to address and deal with during the process. So we recommend transmittal of this comprehensive plan, for at least the state's review. So with that, I'll try and answer your questions you have. Thank you.
So before we open up questions, since we have audience on this, I'd like to open it up to the audience first.
Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, 860 Pointset Avenue. I've got some things to tell you you don't want to hear. So, instead of giving you an introduction, I'll start with a conclusion and recommendations, which is not very nice. So my conclusion is, is that you shouldn't accept this 2040 comprehensive plan, because you can support and pass this, this comprehensive plan. However, your approval is meaningless. I won't say meaningless, I won't say void at this time, because city manager and council, they violate the stormwater management plan. And, this is, let me say, for number one, is a failure to, to share the, the master plan. It's called "Master Plan for Storm-Drained Greater Titusville Area as Required with Brevard County." That's the first thing, this is adopted in 1966. And they've, number two, is their failure to obtain easements for the stormwater flow and, and maintenance purposes. I'm especially talking about maintenance of floodways that are outside of city limits. But these floodways, and what you understand is, they affect not just your stormwater section of this comp plan, but also the coastal management section, which is affected by water that will, will go under the railroad tracks to downtown areas, coastal management. So, there was a petition signed by 150 people that, for having these floodways maintained. City council disapproved them. So, cities, cities policy, I want to use the word "policy," to not maintain these floodways outside of city limits, is a plan for failure. It's a plan to be unprepared for storm events. That's what we have. It's in violation of the stormwater management plan. It's in violation of the design of I-95. It's in violation of logic and common sense. It is, what I've done is, is that I've opposed this for, I've brought this to the tension to city council for over a year. In fact, I've recorded an affidavit in public records of gross negligence, and, that our city manager and city council have towards this particular issue of maintenance. And it's been unopposed. Please note that the, I've already said that. So, I have a recommendation. And the recommendation, I don't know if, if, how in the world P&amp;Z can implement this, but maybe there is a way. So, I have, for seven years, I have asked city manager and council, I've asked them to meet with me. May I have more time?
How much more time you think you need?
Well, I'll tell you what, I'd like another five minutes, and I, what I would like to do is be able to answer your questions, because I-
So, what I would have to do is, I'd have to ask the board, so-
Yes.
When you say five minutes, what I'm saying is, how much more time would you need to wrap up? And then we could go to questions to you.
Well, I, I'd like, I'd like five minutes, please.
All right, so I would defer to the board.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I'll try to talk a little bit faster. Recommendations is that, that I've challenged this, and by the way, the city manager and council members will not meet with me. I'll call them on the phone, they won't return my calls, they won't return emails, on this particular issue. The, but my recommendation is for the city to spend just a little bit of money, obtain a competent, what they believe to be a competent engineer who will dispute my findings. For example, I have, my, the affidavit that's recorded in public records is titled this, this is the title of it. "Affidavit of Gross Negligence by Some City Officials and City Council on Refusal by the City of Titusville to Have Ditches and Floodways Inspected and Maintained for Over Forty Years." And identify the city manager and, and the city council members by name in this affidavit. And it has, says "Have acted with gross negligence in this, in the discharge of their duties regarding their continued refusal to have maintained or to have inspected floodways, ditches, especially between St. John's, well, to the St. John's River." And it's, it's the responsibility, it's in, it's in violation of all of these things. And what I've done is, I've, I've prepared about 15 pages to send to you, and I thought that May 8th was tomorrow. So, I'm going to send you an email after this meeting, of, of about 15 pages regarding this issue that I disapprove of it, of, of this approval of going to the state at this time. And I'll be sending you this affidavit, and an affidavit- And I'll be sending you this affidavit and an affidavit in another title. It's called "Affidavit of My Findings of Bad Decisions Due to Lack of..." By the way, this is signed and sealed by me as a registered professional engineer. One I am licensed to do is protect the health, safety, welfare, private property of the public. And I'm asking you to get someone who will disagree with me. Seven years now, city has been able to get anybody to disagree with me and they refuse to do it. The reason for it, because they're scared. They violated all kinds of regulations and it would be exposure of the city to a lot of misconduct and negligence, incompetence. It's bad stuff. In fact, it's what I, I think you already know is that I've asked the city manager to resign. And what happened about the next meeting, what they did is they had the police officers come up here behind me and remove me from the chambers. I sued the city, though, and won, but that's another story. The other affidavit I have is affidavit of my certain bad decisions due to lack of common sense, faulty thinking, deception, dishonesty at the top level of city government, the city of Titusville. I have signed and sealed that. So if you can, I guess I'll wrap it up right there. And I might just say is that I've lived here for 47 years, registered in 1976, examined in civil engineering, examined in mechanical engineering, registered land surveyor since 1980. I've done numerous site plans and subdivision for the city of Titusville. I mean, within the city of Titusville, not for the city of Titusville. I was rudely awakened in 2012 to discover, discover that the flood zone maps are incorrect by a big amount. And the city knows that, they have the information, and they've concealed it from you, the public, and from FEMA. It's a bad thing. It's a rude awakening to me. I didn't know that until 2012. So I'm coming to you, former employee of the city of Titusville, retired in 2008. Retired also, I mean, I left, I used to work for Brevard County. So, and I'm also a member of Tau Beta Pi Engineering Honorary Society, former president, Cape Canaveral Branch, American Society of Civil Engineers. And it's a sad situation. So I've got, what, about left? One minute. So this affidavit is a serious issue. And the city manager and council is, we've got some good people on council, but they're following what the city manager says. And I'm hoping that you can get somebody to disagree. But at this time, your comprehensive plan, 2040 sections, coastal management and stormwater are in conflict of what the city council and city manager policies are right now, what they're doing. So I'm here to answer any questions you have.
Okay. Other questions to Stan? All right, well, thank you. Do we have other cards on this?
Claudette Beggs.
Good evening, chairman, members. I'm Claudette Beggs from River Edge Drive. And we met, we're some of the folks that met with Brad on Monday night. And he gave us a great presentation and overview and things that he thought would affect us. And the important thing is we have our River Edge Small Area Plan that, I guess, is, that's our gospel. That's what we're going through, or that's what, you know, we respond to. So we're happy with that. What we're nervous about or questioning, I guess, in this whole grand scheme of this comprehensive, comprehensive plan is the trail, that's the six-mile-long trail that's going to go along the river, along the lagoon from downtown to 405s, that road 405. So our question is how, and I know this is all just conceptual, as Brad has expressed to us, but how can it be envisioned that there are homes that are right along the river? You know, you know, I, you know, you hear the word eminent domain. I would certainly hope our properties wouldn't be taken away from us so that a trail could be put through in our backyard to go along the river. And, you know, we just want it, want it on record that that's a big concern for us. And I'm speaking on behalf of the people from River Edge Drive. But I know all throughout the city, there are, even in, you know, the London, like Titusville High School, there's, you know, condos and stuff. I don't know how you do a trail there, but it's just our concern as to exactly how something like that would be laid out and how it would affect our properties, our personal properties. You know, there's like, and there's one, I need my reading glasses for this. It's like the waterfront policy 1.2.2, "Work with Property Owners to Secure Land or Easements to Support the Development of a Continuous Multi-Use Trail East of Highway 1." You know, you work with us. So what does that mean? It's just very vague and it's concerning. That's it.
Did you want to, I mean, I know you and I talked about that. Do you want to answer her question? I mean, I know what you're going to say, but...
I do, too.
Yeah, the consultant, when they came and worked with us, they looked at our previous plans, including the 2007 US One Quarter Master Plan, and really saw that the water was a huge asset that we need to preserve and really bank on. And so saw the, you know, the opportunity, if possible, for a waterfront trail, maybe a linear trail, or a linear park, rather, would be a real asset to the city. Because a lot of communities, they do their public activities right there along that water. That's a huge economic boom for them. So, but, you know, even during, 2007, during that study of the US One Quarter Master Plan and study, and even in this statement here, I mean, does not contemplate taking people's residential property to put a trail behind them. So I think, and especially a lot of those lots are right up in that water. I mean, it just, I don't know if that's ever going to happen. What the US One Quarter Master Plan study did was look at where it's possible, where the opportunities are. And also, you know, that the, I can't remember the name of it, but there is, one of the regional trails that's planned in Titusville, that converge into Titusville, goes up and down US One. So I'd imagine certain segments of that could be parallel to certain parts that we would find, hopefully, a linear trail along the water. And then that would jig, you know, zig back to along the, near US One and then go back out of the water. That's, but that's a long-term vision. So what the consultant was really suggesting is continue to look at that as an opportunity.
Jane, hold on. Number Noel Copeland.
So I agree, and we brought this up before, that, you know, where you've got private property, you can't put that against the river. But I wanted to ask, when we look at projects like the Marina Hotel that, you know, came up recently, are, in those plans, are we making sure that the public has access to the river on those properties?
Yes, in fact, you saw that in the high overlay ordinance.
Okay, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure that I understand for the private property, that's, we shouldn't do that. But I want to make sure for any non, for any commercial or, you know, hotels or anything like that, that we're not blocking off the river at those spots.
I would say where there's opportunity for redevelopment.
Yeah.
Or new development.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, you can have that policy in place to ask and do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I get clarification. You said River Oaks Drive, you meant River Edge.
River Edge Drive, yes, okay, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next card?
That's it.
That's it, all right. So we'll close it to the public. One of the things that I'd brought up before about, when I talked to Brad, was that when the, the towers, the Cross from Sandpoint Park, when they, when those were built, one of the things that came up was the city wanted access to the river. And developer came in at that time, I'm on. The developer came in at that time and said, Dwight, do you remember this? They said, "You'd be taking our land and that's your..." And so I do believe that that argument still exists. It's considered taking of land, but I also think with some of the, I think the city's being a bit creative in creating some policies, there's some give and take on this. Maybe that reduces, I don't know, I hope so. I definitely want to be able to, the city residents should have access to some of the river, not all of the river. You know, for those areas that are presently built on, I can understand the residents have property rights that we shouldn't impose on. But, you know, hopefully, this is creative enough to encourage developers to allow for that. Anyway, I know that there's going to be a lot of questions, so I'm going to hold back on mine. And then if I hear the questions, I'm, because I know we're getting it at nine o'clock now. So, not that I'm discouraging anybody from asking questions, I think this is a very, very important topic. So if you have them, you ask, because the, it's very critical. Number Noel Copeland.
So I just have a generic question. I'd like something in here that says that after adoption, that we will identify and make appropriate code changes within a very specific amount of time. So that we don't have what we talked about earlier, where the code and the comprehensive plan are out of sync. And so we have issues where, you know, something may follow the code, but it doesn't follow the comprehensive plan. So I just want some kind of administrative statement that says, after adoption, the city has certain, a very specific amount of time to update the appropriate codes.
Look, just the comment on the previous comp plans and even other places, they have certain dates. They say by certain date, 2022 or 2025. And that time lapses, or it's maybe sometimes a date is not realistic enough. So what we're suggesting here is, in the last part of the comp plan, which we haven't shown you yet, is the carrying over those strategies at the end of each section into an implementation matrix where each one...
As long as somewhere it's documented that we're going to make these changes so we don't run into the situation like we did, talked about earlier tonight, where something may follow the code, but it's against the plan.
We can show that.
We've got to make sure we sync them up sooner than later, so we don't have these issues.
Understood, yeah, we'll definitely do that with the, with the matrix that we want to provide to you.
So as you were going through that and talking about things that you were still going to bring to us, it kind of confused me a bit because I thought, well, I'm assuming that you wanted us to take a vote on this tonight. And then you did say that, and then...
I am asking for a vote.
Yes, and then, on the other hand, when you were giving your presentation, you were saying, "Well, we're going to give you additional information on how we're implementing it and how this will affect that."
But this vote is to, is to transmit this draft, it's not the final, right?
Well, you're saying you want, I mean, I've never heard of us transmitting a draft to the state.
You did that last year with the year.
Well, I mean, I thought the year is different than the comp plan.
What Brad, what Brad had said is that any changes that are created after the implementation of the transmittal would be specifically delineated to the state so that they would be able to...
But they always do that.
Right.
Whenever you do the comp plan amendments, it used to be you could only do it twice a year. Now you can do it at any time. Thank heavens for that. But, because you couldn't adopt until they, I thought, approved. So I guess if it's, yeah, okay, I was thinking, I don't know where else...
So my understanding from what he said was, they're going to, they're going to, the state will start their review while we sharpen the pencil and do the finalization.
And I heard you say that, but, well, I'm just not as, I just... Sometimes when you give the green light for something and it's, I'll just put it this way. I recently had something happen where I live, where they asked, "Can we look into something?" And so everybody's like, "Sure, you can look into it." And then they came back and they said, "Here's your choices, one or two." It wasn't, "No," it was, "Here's your choices, that's it, we've said yes, we're doing it." And so I feel like this is potentially the same thing. I want to be able to reel back and say, "Whoa, whoa, 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 I didn't..." And I understand we're a recommending board. Truly, it is really up to council on this.
If I may, as far as the process, you know, it comes back to you from the state and you get to see what they say, what they disliked or did like. And then you have typically 180 days to adopt.
But that's my point.
But if you don't, then it goes back to the same process again.
No, 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 but that's why I'm asking that. So we're sent, so you're saying, yes, we're sending them a draft plan, but that is the real deal. And if they say yes, then there's 180 days of final adoption. And that's why I'm saying we're not...
But is that 180 days our opportunity to send them changes?
Start again.
So, but that's why...
For them to adopt, not us, right?
No, 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 for us to adopt. So this is sending the real deal.
No, no, so now I want to understand, too. So we send it to them, they review it, they send back, we like, we don't like, whatever. Then the clock starts for 180 days for us to adopt it.
No, what happens is, they send you, typically what they'll do is they'll send you what's called an objections report. They object to certain things because they find that there's some violations.
Okay.
So you have a certain amount of time to address that.
To address their objections.
Not to adopt, to address that.
Right, to address their objections.
Yes, and then you send that back to them, they confirm again.
So during that process, can we also send other changes?
Absolutely, yeah, as long as you identify what those changes are to them, yeah. And that's what we did with the year last year.
And then if they send objections to the newer changes, do we have another 180 days?
We have a certain amount of time to address those objections. So it can go on.
So the clock starts again, basically, for the review.
What I'm talking about, the 180 days, actually, if they come back to you and say, "We have no objection." Now, you do what you need to do, we got, you got a certain...
But still, within that 180 days, we can say, "These are some edits to section whatever."
Absolutely.
We send it back to them and then they would say whether or not they object to those changes.
Correct, correct.
I think the concern is, there were a laundry list of questions and clarifications requested from many of the various board members, and we're basically, you know, caring, we can talk about that later. But in the meantime, we're going to go ahead and send this to the state.
What I'm, what I'm seeing from the questions, and obviously you may disagree with me on this. So what I'm seeing is that I didn't see questions about the fundamental approach. And about questions that the, would talk about changes to the comp plan that are not, somehow make it inconsistent with statute. The state is just going to look at this to say, what is, how is it consistent with state statute and whether it impacts a state interest. They may come back with objection, they may find an objection, I don't know. You never know what the state will do, but that's typically what they look at. So the kind of questions I see here are more about clarifications, providing some tweaks, explain what that is, or even suggestions for certain additional strategies that are more local.
So if we vote to approve transmittal, can we get commitment that in every subsequent meeting for the next however long it takes, we're going to address these specific questions and clarifications so that we don't run out our own clock?
Absolutely, yeah.
And then say, "Oh, we never got to that, this is in now."
Yeah, it was suggested to me by another member to maybe consider scheduling a workshop just dedicated to this issue so that you can go through all that process and the questions and kind of eliminate them. So if, you know...
I just want to make sure that we schedule, whether it's a workshop, whether it's a half an hour on the, on every meeting for however long, whatever it is, that we have a channel while the, while the state's reviewing, you know, while this other stuff is happening.
Right.
So that by the time it's time to adopt, that we're comfortable that all of the questions, clarifications, confusion, whatever, has been addressed.
Absolutely.
So, so I wanted to tag on to this so that there's clarification. So in the past, they, I thought what we would do is we would collect, well, first off, I want to say this. In the, years ago, the state objected to things and they would come back and decline. And I haven't seen that in a long time. It seems like they approve fairly easily now. And am I right? I mean, do you remember years ago, you would get objections and they would clearly say no?
Much different.
And yeah, it's a different, it's different now. Well, they say yes on everything, it seems like, but not that that's such a bad thing. I'm just saying that I anticipate the state to say yes to this, I really do. But at the same time, so I want to understand this, are you going to treat this as a CPA amendment to a pre-approved change? Or are you going, what I'm saying is, it hasn't been formally adopted, so it's not the official comprehensive plan amendment, okay? So what I think that in the past, I might, I can't remember exactly, where we added it all up and we said, okay, we're going to make this change, we're going to make this change, we're going, we're collectively adding it up and then you submit all the things all at once in one package. Is that the approach you're looking, or are you going to go individually to the state?
I would imagine that we're going to transmit as is and then collectively do a red line to it and then submit that as one.
Right.
Change.
That's how we did the year last, yeah, you could do it that way.
Well, I'm just trying to understand because.
And that's why I think it's important that we schedule, whether, again, whether it's a workshop or whether, however we want to do it, that we schedule the time and commit to it so that we know within a month, two months, whatever it is from now, that we will have gotten the clarification that we need in order to.
But I just want to make it clear.
Get the changes.
We're, we're not really submitting a draft, that's where, we are submitting the real deal. And that's where I think, that's why I have an issue with.
It's the final, but it's a changeable final.
But now you're telling me it's not complete with the other portion of the information, that's saying this is how we're going to do it. But technically, that's not part of that, is it?
Sir, we, what we've submitted to you is our draft.
Yes.
So it's our, it's a plan, we're not, the changes that remain are going to be bound by you.
Your implementation is not really part of that, is that?
The implementation strat, uh, matrix? No, we don't have to provide that at this point, no.
But I'm saying, will it be included?
Oh, yeah.
Part of this?
Yeah, we'll show that to you.
But will it be, will it be included when you transmit to the state, is the question?
Right, so it's not technically part of that, you have wrapped this up, this is done. And that's just basically saying, strategy phase.
Because the state doesn't have to approve your implementation plan, right?
No.
Okay.
That's why it's not going.
Much better. So that was all I had, I mean, I just wanted to, so while we're, well, you brought that up, I wanted to. Not that I was trying to cut you off, Mr. Severs. So, Mr. Severs.
At the moment, I'm not in a position to support the transmittal of the plan. I don't think the city should be in a time crunch to do something when frankly, we haven't even talked once about the future land use map and where the lines are drawn, at all. And I see lots of issues with the future land use map that we ought to at least address and talk about. In addition, I did fully expect my November 7th request to have strike-throughs and underlines. And because of my Burchr letter and experience, I see tweaking or changing of language in the conservation element or environmental element that disturb me. It tends to suggest to me that there must be some kind of effort to water down the conservation element from its present language. And I certainly couldn't support transmittal of this environmental element. I might be more interested in attaching our current element. I think it's a lot clearer, concise, organized, you name it, compared to this draft. But whenever I see tweaking of words that dramatically change certain emphasis in that area, that concerns me. And I think we are owed, what are, what's the differences, what is left out and why it's changed. I think the city council deserves that, do they really know what they are doing? And maybe it doesn't matter, maybe it does matter, I don't know. But I certainly understand a comprehensive plan to have great consequences. People rely upon the words greatly. But likewise, they even more so rely upon the future land use map and we haven't talked about that, to my knowledge, not since I've been on here, once. And the classification of the size of the neighborhood area, the entire area between Hopkins Avenue and US 1 under Gateway, and how that's going to be implemented, how it's going to protect the single-family neighborhoods. I have been involved in countless public hearings of fighting over rezoning requests and neighborhoods just south of the library, north of Titus Landing, wanting to try to protect that neighborhood. And we have all of that area, all of it, as Gateway. And I can read certain pages, certain words saying we want to promote mixed development, multifamily in Gateway, and I can read another section says, we intend to protect the single-family neighborhoods. And I see in reports, sometimes certain words are emphasized and others are not. We need to make sure that we're protecting, that is such a broad category. And you have such a mixture of development in there. And please look at the Gateway portion as such. Even on my local basis on Riverside Drive, where do you draw the line and start having riverfront crowding up Riverside Drive? I don't agree with the line at all because it goes too far north of the rivers. I think residential streets, if it's residential currently, why are we putting it in Gateway when it should be in residential? Now, I have no problem at all, sitting down and having a thorough workshop and we start from page one and we go all the way through. I appreciate, Brad, your presentation, it's very global. But now we, we have to get in the weeds because these words do mean something. These maps do mean something and people rely upon them. And if we're not going to do that, I don't think we're doing our job. And I see, so, I mean, you did bring up about reuse lines in the area of critical concern. Frankly, I, at least I'm willing to take a stand and staff. You need to do what the comprehensive plan has been saying. You need to have lines in those areas because it's now recently been publicized, a lot of cities have reclaimed water down US 1 or near the river and it's high in nutrients, and guess what's happening to the Indian River? They say, don't have your reclaimed water that lines there. And it's just common sense to have those reclaimed water lines in our area of critical concern so we can recharge our aquifer. And to fight that, and what I'm saying, doesn't make sense. Frankly, it doesn't make sense. And so, I mean, we have a lot to talk about and, I mean, as you can tell, I spent a lot of time looking at this and making concrete suggestions because I still believe what I said in November. We need to protect the area of critical concern for our future water supply and continuing water supply. And we need to come up with our own plan to try to protect the Indian River Lagoon. And I think this plan doesn't do that. And for 2040, we need to think about doing that. And now is the time to do it. And I'm not in favor of transmitting something that I disagree with in so many ways. I just can't do, bring myself to do that.
Do we have a deadline by which to submit this to the state?
No.
So we're not up against anything? So there's no downside to us taking the appropriate time to get through this?
No, there's no downside, but I will say this, two things. You know, we've had many discussions with Mr. Commissioner Severs on a variety of topics about this comprehensive plan and other parts of the regulations. And I'll, I'll state right now, staff fundamentally disagrees with many things that Mr. Severs has promoted and suggested to. So we can certainly work with him or with the commission on this to make changes to this or the other portions of the code we want to. I also want to say this too, I, well, and that said, so there may be some disagreements that we not, might not be able to come, to go over and complete. And that might just be the case. And so then, the decision to you is, what is fundamentally what you want to see as a long-term vision for this community? Is the current comprehensive plan, does that meet your needs? Did it create the community that you see? Does it continue to create the community that you see before you? Is that what you want? So if that's the case, then reject this plan. Or make tweaks to it. If that is not the case and you want to see something different, then consider this plan. We've worked tremendously hard on it. We've also spent a lot of time researching what other communities have done. I'll be frank with you, the, the way planning has been done in this city is very old school. And what we're promoting to you is something that's new to help address a lot of issues and concerns that you have brought to us in the past year and a half and the community has complained about. And about processes as well, and how that's been convoluted as well. I'm willing to work with you on a series of meetings or workshop, we can do that if you want to delay this, that's not a problem. But I just want you to understand that you're going to come to a fundamental decision eventually that you're going to have to make because it's not going to be 100% satisfactory to everybody.
I think that's fair, and I think if, if only one member had questions or wanted clarifications, I think that's different, but multiple people had.
Understood, yeah.
Several pages, right, of questions, clarifications, whatever.
But let me.
And I think, but I think that, I just, I don't want the perception that we're just trying to, oh, thanks, you know, thanks anyway, we're going to go ahead and transmit it. I think if we could say, we're going to, we'll, we'll table this decision to transmit for 30 or 60 days and have a workshop or have whatever with this, with this board and your, you know, and staff to go through this stuff. And then at that point, we make the decision. But I, I don't, I, I don't think anybody thinks they're going to get everything they want. I think some of it truly is, help me understand this, I'm not quite sure, you know, how it, how it works in real life.
I just want you to consider this, one thing, as you continue to work with, let's say we have the workshop, we continue several meetings, we work on some of these issues. You won't have the benefit to know what the state said. And then you make changes or tweaks to this, and then you send it to the state and they said, no, all that stuff you worked on, it doesn't work. You don't know that. And so that's why we're recommending allowing the state to at least look at it. Because when it comes back, and they're okay with everything, you have a certain amount of time to adopt. But if you don't adopt, it just starts over again, you had to send it back to them again. So you lose nothing, there's no deadline on this, yes. But what we're suggesting to you is allow the state to have an opportunity to look at.
But there's a deadline once we submit it.
To adopt, but if you don't adopt, then it just means.
We start all over again.
Yeah, you got to send it back to them again if you want to, if you want to do this, as a transmittal. So I don't think you lose.
Well, well, I don't want to say nothing because Mr. Richardson, is that good? I'll wait to make my comments, Mr. Richardson?
Well, I'm a returning member of this commission, absent for 30 years. If this is the Titusville that we think it should be in 2040, there's a lot of things that have got to be addressed that are not in this plan. And I won't go through the list. I believe it's not ready to transmit, I agree with Member Severs. We have to make some changes and talk about those changes, but I'm not ready to vote tonight to transmit the plan.
So if we vote not to transmit, city council can still vote to transmit, right? Is that accurate or not?
Here's the deal, if that was the case.
I just want to make sure I understand the options.
I'm just saying, from our standpoint, it would be far better to table and then we don't take a vote. Because my understanding is, is we need to take action on it, up or down, one of the two. It gives us that ability.
We can or cannot table?
We can table and we could request to have a workshop and to work with council. What I would like to see is, I would like to say, to see some of the feedback from council, to see what they're saying. We've seen some of what we've, we've said. If we need to sit down with council in a workshop, I agree, I mean, yes, everything is a negotiation and you're not going to get everything you want. But there's certain things that you would like to know, look, I want to know what is, what is most near and dear to me, what is a deal breaker. There's certain things that are deal breakers to each one of us. And so I would like to know what's, what is the offer on the table? And then, but at the same time, and this is what hasn't been mentioned, I want to know what its staff's position is, is what you're willing to go forward on and not. Because there's times, if we transmitted now and then we say, well, we're going to make some changes later, then later comes and it's like, look, we didn't like that, but now it's been transferred. I've, I've played my hand and now I can't come back because it's already been pushed. And now there's no leverage to change that. So I'm just saying, yes, I would like to know staff's position on what is a deal breaker for staff as well. Not that, not necessarily, you know, there's times when I agree, look, you know, from your standpoint, you can't go with that, agree, and then I can give that up. And I've done that many a times and I'm fine with that. But it's nice to know upfront rather than pushing something forward and not knowing what's, what's going to change. So, was that it, Mr.?
Well, I'd just add that probably a good idea is to have a workshop meeting with the council and the staff. You know, if it takes two days. You know, not full-time, Dwight, but if it's two different days, just let us talk about it thoroughly and what our positions are. We need to hear some ideas from council.
Yeah.
And the, the staff.
So, was that it? Okay, I wanted to come in here and say this too, though. And so I listened to what you said and you and I had talked, I think you, you and I sat down for a couple hours that day. And I, I appreciate your time, I appreciate everything, I see what you've done, I see what staff's done. This is no, this is a lot of work, I appreciate that. So I would never ever want to dismiss that. But, and not but as in dismissing your work. It's one thing that was mentioned, and so I'd rather put it out to everybody. And this is what I've seen, and this is what I've told you. I see the city responding to, I'm throwing out a number, five developers, okay? Could be a little more, could be a little less. And developers have come in, and when I say developers, I'm talking about housing developers, apartment developers. And we've changed the codes, we've increased densities, we've increased heights, we've taken off conditional use permits, we've literally taken off all the stops for them to build. And what I've literally seen is the Titusville residents, what they've really asked for is things to do, places to shop, small-town feel, and everything that we're getting is not that. It says it in the very first part of that, but what we're really getting out of this is housing. And I know the theory is, is you build it and then the retail comes and, but that's not always the case, it really isn't. So, you know, I'm saying, and I say this to you guys, I say this to council, talk to the residents, don't just talk to the developers, because I'm hearing something different. different. Not from, I mean, I've heard from some residents to say, "I don't care," or, "Hey, whatever, doesn't matter to me." Okay, great. But if I heard that from the majority of Titusville, in my small little world, you know, but if I did, it would change my opinion. Fine, if that's what you want, majority rules. But I don't hear that, and I don't know how you guys, I hear people saying, "I want things to do, I didn't ask for a high-rise, I didn't ask for another development, I didn't ask for 250 thou-" I mean, the housing here is off the charts high, which that's the market, I understand, but affordable housing is, if they are asking for housing, they're asking for affordable housing. So, I appreciate everything you, you guys have done awesome on this. And I do, there's a lot of aspects I do like about it, but there's a lot of unknowns, and it sounds to me like Mr. Severs and I had a lot of the same concerns when it came down to it on some of that. I believe that if we're looking at doing densities, I believe corridors are where it should go, we can handle the load. I think they've accommodated some of that, but then I think some of the densities and intensities have been added in some of the other areas I'm not thrilled with. But everything's negotiable. So, that's all, and Mr. Severs.
Certainly, I'm in favor of a workshop, in favor of meeting with city council as well, and to discuss the issues, and I have no problem with that. Certainly think there is a lot of positive things in the concept behind this comprehensive plan, but likewise, I think there are some things that, just like my conversations with Mr. Broome has indicated to me of his concern about implementation and how, what the consequences, I always look, what is the consequences of this decision, and how is it going to impact somebody else? Apparently, I struck a nerve, Mr. Parrish, with you, the fervor by which you displayed that you and I guess a lot of staff just firmly disagree with some of my positions. I would respectfully ask the right to sit down with you and perhaps Chelsea, and see what those are, because I'm more than open-minded, I will state my views, I respect yours, and I would just simply don't want any friction, as was evident by your manner of speech. And I think we certainly can work together, and like I said, I respect your role, I hope that people respect my role as well.
I want to add one more thing on there, too, real quick, and I mentioned this as well. My concern was that with the concurrency and with water, I do believe that we have some issues that was brought up, you might have brought that up, too, about where we have to add new wells, but what I was also looking for the plan is, what is our capability, where's our max? And our plan should say that. If our max is below 80-something thousand of the high, then we need to reconsider. Because if we can't support, if we can only support 66,000 at a mid, and that's our top range, I mean, when I said on the environmental commission, somebody came there and said, "We're going to run out of water in 10, 10 years." And I said, at that meeting, "Okay, what if we make the changes that you're talking about?" And they said, "We're going to run out of water in 10 years." I said, "So, no matter what, we're going to run out of water if we do something or if we don't do something?" Yes. While it's passed 10 years now, but we haven't ran out of water, and I think we're still good, but the figures that I'm getting from them don't look good. We're reducing our capacities, or not capacities, what the, each person uses, which that's, I mean, I don't see anybody using 90 gallons a day, but, but we're reducing that, which is increasing the overall of what we're capable of, and I see that. And there's some logic to what they're saying, but what is our maximum capability of our current wellfields, or what we can buy? Will we need to go to cocoa? And what is their capacities? Because if we can only sustain so many people, we need to know that. And then maybe we need to look at maybe curtailing to some of the development. But a lot of that never gets discussed, but it's something that we really need to look at, if we're, if the possibility to go up to 80-something thousand is really there. Are there other questions of staff? Oh, I thought, I thought you chimed in, okay.
I'd like to thank you for all the work that you did, and for the, what, hour and a half, two hours that we sat down, and I really think that we have a piece of work that we can work on together. And so I agree with those people I've been listening to that really have some concern. I heard Dwight talk about the concerns about conservation land and wetlands, and those really are important to me, too. So, I, I'm willing to go to a workshop and work with whomever wants to do it. I think being with the council would be good if they will work with us. So, I recommend that we go for a whole day of working, maybe two days, okay?
Okay, Member Noel Copeland.
I'm moving that we table voting on transmittal until we have completed a workshop. I'll second that.
Okay. So can we take a vote on this?
Member Richardson?
Yes.
Secretary Chambers?
Yes.
Member Severs?
Yes.
Member Noel Copeland?
Yes.
Member Hare?
Yes.
Chairman Williams?
Yes. Thank you for everything you've done, thank you to all of staff. So please don't take this as us dismissing it, so.
No, I, let me just say this, I, if I came across this cross in any way, I did not mean to do that, I was, I just want you to understand that the, I didn't see that you're losing anything as a result of this. The issues that I see here are primarily local-related, they're not addressing state statutes and requirements of that. So these are local policies that you can continue to work on, that's what I see. So, you're not going to see what the state's seeing, that's what really I was just trying to advocate for. So now you have to wait till after that, but that's fine, we'll, we'll work with you. I don't know what council's going to say about scheduling a joint workshop, but we'll provide that recommendation.
Mr. Richardson?
I kind of think you're looking at things at a 50,000-foot level, and we're looking at things at 10-foot level.
Right, this plan is a policy document, yeah. I mean, we want to be careful putting regulatory language inside a comprehensive plan, and specific standards. So you, what you want to do, it's a vision document, it's a guideline, it's a policies about how to, how do you want you to see your city.
Okay. Is that it? Everybody good? Done with this item?
We're done.
All right, let me go back to, all right. So we'll go to reports. I know that, although all those were the actions from city council that you gave us, that was good, thank you. What reports do you have?
Just on May 28th, we have the Resiliency Strategic Plan that's going to be presented to council, and on June 11th, we'll have to council a multimodal transportation plan will be presented to them as well. So as soon as we have that available, we'll put them online, we'll share that with you.
Okay, when's our next meeting?
May-
22nd.
Okay, 22nd. Okay, I was thinking I was going to be out of town, but I think I will be here. Okay, Chelsea?
I have, I have no report.
Okay. So petitions from public presence.
Stan Johnson, 860 Point Set Avenue. I like Titusville, actually, it's more than that. This is where I want my grandchildren to grow up. And this is the place I chose to live. I could live in Costa Rica, somewhere else, here's where I want to live. And I'm concerned about my city. I'm concerned like maybe some of y'all concerned into it turning into a little Miami. I'm also concerned about what my role is here. I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'm trying to protect the city, I'm licensed to do that. And right now, you have a number of ordinances and things that are going on in the city of Titusville that I have concerns about. And I voice these concerns to the point that I'm even putting affidavits in public records of Brevard County. You should have somebody to be able to support you who is a professional engineer. I mean, we're licensed to protect the health, safety, welfare, and private property of the public. When I go before council, and I'm going on these issues, I'm, I'm putting some, I'm putting my license on the line. And right now, is that there is one person who opposes me, it's you, Harling, and I'm reporting him to the board regarding this issue about not maintaining the floodways. But the thing is, as I mentioned to you, is that, is that the city needs to get somebody, I mean, the city has got all kinds of money. Get someone to oppose me. And what I'm saying to you is that, is that you cannot get someone competent to oppose what I'm saying. One of the reasons is because if they disagree with this, and it's an issue that I believe is, is true, which I believe it is, I will report them to the board. So we have serious safety, health, private property issues, welfare, that are not being addressed, and the city will not address them. When I address them, they won't get somebody to dispute me. That's a serious matter that I'm concerned about, and I would like you to be concerned about it, too. It's very serious. I'm the only one here, right now, in this audience, who's licensed to do that, and I can be reported to the board if I do it wrong. But the city can't get someone to dispute me. It's been seven years, and I keep challenging the city. So, so thank you for what you're doing, and your position, and your consideration, and I'm trying to bring to you a very serious issue, and we're in trouble. So I'll be sending you an email that I already prepared, had to just touch it, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. All right, so we'll go down the list, and Mr. Richardson?
No report.
Member Hare?
None.
Mr. Severs?
None.
Secretary Chambers?
None.
Member Noel Copeland?
None.
And I have nothing, so we're adjourned. Thank you.